I'll call the regular meeting of the city council to order for April the fourteenth, two thousand and nine. We have the roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, can we have the closed session report from the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session to discuss the matters set forth in the closed session agenda at the beginning of the open meeting. No reportable action was taken.
Okay, thank you. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Daigle, followed by the invocation by Frank Carpenter?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would you please just remain standing and join me in a prayer? Dear God, as we gather this evening, we ask your blessing upon this haven that we call our home, where the sun has ever shone. We thank you for these public servants and their commitment here. May they prove resourceful stewards tonight and through the coming year. We thank you for our fellow citizens who care enough to join us too, participating in our government as we are privileged to do. We ask you, Lord, for wisdom and for vision as we lead, patience with one another, and a heart for those in need. May we be true to what we promise, may we be just in every way, and honor all entrusted to us in this fair city by the bay. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have three presentations tonight. The first one is a presentation by the volunteers in policing in recognition of achieving the $1 million mark with volunteer hours.
Mr. Mayor, council members, just a real quick overview of what our volunteer program is. It began in nineteen ninety-nine, and each one of our volunteers that are coming down here are graduates from our Citizens Academy. And we have our first volunteer that started with the program, Carol McDonald. Carol's our very first volunteer out of our first Citizens Academy class. We have seventeen, in addition to the eighteen that we have here that are currently active, we had seventeen other volunteers over the last ten years that have helped contribute to our volunteer hours. And what they're presenting today is a check for $1 million, and that's the value of the volunteer hours that they have. According to the Orange County Volunteer Center, they value each volunteer hour at $21, and these volunteers have contributed forty-six thousand hours of volunteer time to the city. They've done many things that the police department is not going to be able to do, including vacation checks. They have done seventeen, I'm sorry, twelve-hundred-and-thirty-five vacation checks in the last ten years, and that's where they actually go out and circle somebody's house, make sure that their doors and windows are locked, and if there's an issue, they'll call us. Hundred-and-eighty-six garage checks, where they, if they see a garage door that's open, they'll contact the residents, make sure they're aware of that. They've distributed over sixteen-hundred crime alerts, one-hundred parking, handicap parking tickets, and something that's near and dear to all of our hearts, they've removed thirteen-hundred illegally post signs. They also stock our police cars, give station tours, assist in traffic control, their special events, and many other things. We also have one of our senior volunteers, Sandy Meadows, who's contributed four-thousand volunteer hours so far, all by herself. So I'm going to pass the microphone off to Malcolm Reed, who's going to tell you a little bit more about the volunteer program and make the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel? Thank you. I'm honored to be here on behalf of the volunteers and the fine police force that we are able to work with and participate with and hopefully do some good around the city. Also, I need to set the record straight on a couple of things in an article that you may have read this morning in the newspaper about the volunteer program. And the article said that they are ordinary citizens in the volunteer program. Now, I ask you, do these look like ordinary citizens? All of us are from different walks of life, and everybody really, the one thing that we all do have in common is that we want to give something back to our cities. So I think it makes us really extraordinary citizens, not ordinary citizens. One of the other things that the article said, though, is that we have mundane duties that we do, we perform. And we don't perform any mundane duties. When we look at some of the things that we do, the vacation checks that the chief mentioned, we find oftentimes open doors there, unlocked doors, we bring the regular police out to search the home and secure the home. I don't think many people would look, if it was your home, that it would be a mundane thing. Crime alerts, we distribute thousands of crime alerts where crimes have occurred, and we often talk with neighbors about how to avoid crimes, car break-ins, home break-ins, and things like that, talk with them. And none of us think that that's a mundane duty. And the chief also mentioned that we do handicap sites, big, uh, handicap sites to patrol, make sure that the handicap parking spaces are available for, for the handicap people. And we write tickets, $415, and I don't think anybody would think that that's a mundane ticket as far as what our duties are. So we think that our job is a lot, is not mundane at all, and we really appreciate the opportunity to work with the chief and with the whole staff there at the Newport Beach Police Department. But now, on to what we're here for. We have a check here for $1 million, forty-six thousand hours we have been contributed, I think the chief mentioned, by the volunteer unit since its inception about ten years ago. The newspaper article this morning mentioned that this is a fake check, and I would submit that this is, the service is not fake, maybe the check is, but the service that we provide is definitely not a fake service. It's real service, and we're glad to do it, and we're glad to present to the mayor a check for $1 million.
Okay, see if we can get this all in. You guys cozy up back there. See if we can get y'all in. Okay, here we go. Okay, one more. Everybody smiling?
Smiling.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay? I'll thank you all.
Well, I just want to thank the volunteers for all the work they do. They really do provide a valuable service to our community. Okay, our next presentation is the EcoFabulous event sponsorship by Inside the Outdoors Foundation.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and council, for having us here tonight and for being such big supporters of our event. My name is Megan, and I'm from Inside the Outdoors. And I'd like to start off by just telling you a little bit about who we are. We're part of, excuse me, the Orange County Department of Education. We've been doing environmental and outdoor field trips since the seventies. We serve about one-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand students a year. You may have seen some of the kids on field trips here in Newport. We have sites at Upper Newport Bay, at Crystal Cove, and many other places throughout the county. Right now, you've heard a lot about the Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights, and time spent outside of the classroom doing real-life science is very important for, for child's growth, their confidence, and many other things. But the really exciting thing that we have coming up, that Newport's been a really big help with, is the EcoFabulous Fashion Show and Lifestyle Event at the Newport Coast Community Center. And I'd like, honored to tell you a little bit about that in just a second. But beyond the field trip programs, we also have public community events where we like to educate people about the impact they have on the watershed around us. And so that's part of what this event is about. It's reaching out to the community and letting them know that where you spend your dollars and what you wear every day has an impact on the planet.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor and city council members, for letting us come here and just invite you formally to our event. It's, it's on, you're right in front of you. It's an EcoFabulous Fashion Show and Lifestyle Event. And one of the reasons we, we partnered with the city Newport Beach, we've been working very strongly with Shane Berkley. He's in charge of water conservation for the city. And we actually did a really incredible water conservation PSA with one of the top surfers in the world, Rob Machado, about a month ago. And that PSA is going to run on every cinema in Newport Beach. And the whole point of that is, is taking popular, popular action sports and working together to get the message out and reach the youth, because we really believe in the youth being the power of change and, and allowing them to be an influence in our communities. So the EcoFabulous Fashion Show is actually focused on basically highlighting eco-fashion and lifestyle, which is everything around just everyday life, what can we do a little bit different? And in the evening, we're honoring Ed Begley, Jr. He is from Planet Green, and as you know, actor and activist. He's also a very active member of Oceana. And we're also highlighting the superintendent for all Orange County schools, Bill Habermill. And the reason for that is Bill Habermill, last year, supported highly a, a project that we did with UCI, United Nations, and Department of Education. It's called the Water Innovation Now Contest for all the kids in Orange County. And five-hundred-and-twenty-five kids entered into the project. The top winner won a trip to Fiji and a lot of other great prizes for the teachers' laptops. It was just basically a celebration for youth to come up with the messages. And also, we're highlighting Dr. Jack Skinner and Nancy Skinner for their, their work and role in influencing, helping change here in, in city Newport and beyond. And aside from that, we also have Tana Frederick. She is a very strong activist with Oceana. She just did Project Save Our Surf this last week, which highlighted Rob Machado and also Bill, Paul Nadeh from Billabong, the CEO, that he received a very distinguished award from Oceana. The past awards from Oceana were, were with President Clinton, Sting, Harrison Ford, John Bacard. So, I mean, he really kind of put them all in a caliber of distinguished people. So we hope that you guys can come out, and we're working with the city chamber to kind of get the word out. And again, anybody here, it's, it's about kind of coming together. It's also a fundraiser to support Inside the Outdoors, which won the Governor's Award last year for environmental education, and also won an award from Samuel Lee Foundation. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sounds like a fun and exciting program.
Thank you.
Okay, our final presentation tonight is Jeremy Piaszki, head coach Afghanistan National Water Polo Team.
Good evening, mayors, members of the city council. I appreciate being here today. Just a little bit of background before I start off on this PowerPoint presentation. I grew up most of my life here in Newport Beach, went to Harborview Elementary, and Crown Delmar High School. After my high school career ended, I went to the Marine Corps, and I've been in the Marine Corps Reserve for the past thirteen years. And the reason I'm here today is there's no better place in the world to play water polo than Newport Beach. What we are trying to do with Afghanistan Water Polo, and we are, what we are dedicated to is inspiring the growth and the pursuit of domestic and international excellence in the sport of water polo, and just getting them involved in the international community. We're actually combating terrorism at the fundamental level by helping the children of Afghanistan grow up healthy, with education, and just making them committed members of the international community. But ultimately, what we're trying to do with Afghanistan Water Polo is we want to create heroes for Afghanistan. We want to tell the people of Afghanistan that it's okay to dream, that it's okay for them to follow those dreams, and to go pursue the great things that they want to do, and not to go join the Taliban and, and be negative in Afghanistan next time. Our vision for Afghanistan Water Polo and bringing the national team here to the U.S. is to create national provincial-level programs and competitions for Afghanistan, to participate in regional and international competitions, and to create opportunities for the Afghan people of all ages and ability to enjoy the sport of water polo in the world. Now, our immediate goal is to train in the United States. How are we going to do that? Well, we're going to bring the team here to the U.S. in August. We're looking for sites such as the city of Newport Beach to bring our team. The pools in Afghanistan are only open three months out of the year. Afghanistan is the middle of the war. There's only thirteen pools in the country, no potable water. I could go on and on about why we need to bring team, the team here to the U.S. So we want to bring the team here to the U.S. to get a high level of competition. And again, like I said before, what better place than city of Newport Beach to bring them? We want to prepare to compete in regional and international competitions, whether it's FINA sanctioned competitions, or Olympic qualifiers, or just competing against the USA national team. And we want to ultimately qualify for the 2016 Olympic Games. Now, some of you may feel why not the 2012 Olympic Games? The sport of water polo, just like most other Olympic sports, Olympic team sports, you have to qualify in, in your continent, just like the U.S. every year, or every four years, has to compete against all other teams in this continent to make the, the Olympic Games. So just like in Afghanistan, there's China and Japan and other, you know, big powerhouses that we have to compete against. And 2012, you know, we're taking athletes who, before the national team tryouts, a few months or six months ago, never swam in a pool before, they can't swim under a minute and a hundred-yard freestyle. I could go on and on why 2016, but it's, it's a great goal. Next slide, please. Now, what we're looking for, for the city of Newport Beach is a partnership between the city of Newport Beach and, again, Afghanistan Water Polo. What we're looking for is community hosting here in Newport Beach, donation of pool time. You know, we have Newport Harbor High School and Crown Delmar High School, both have great facilities. I've competed in both of them for many years of my life, both in swimming and water polo. And I've also coached club and high school teams at those facilities as well. We're looking for support and sponsorship from the civic, from civic organizations and from the communities and individuals. We're looking for financial opportunities to help pay our coaching staff, our support staff, you know, our incidentals, so to speak. We're looking for lodging, and our lodging that could be provided to us from the city of Newport Beach or concerned individuals is very simple. Someone who has an extra house, someone who has a couple extra apartments. You know, we could sleep in a gym. I mean, there's so many opportunities of, of how lodging could be provided, you know, for Afghanistan Water Polo and their national team. Ground transportation, there needs to be a way we could get to and from the pools. So any support or ideas on how to help us with our ground transportation would be outstanding. And meals, we're looking for meals from local restaurants or, or individuals who are willing to make a couple pots of spaghetti. Those are the types of things that we're looking for. Next slide, please.
Jeremy, before you can go on, what time period are you talking about?
Oh, we're looking for-
Are we signing up for a year or a week?
No, no, we're looking for a one-month time period. And, and the time period is, is open to what the city of Newport Beach would like to provide. So we're very open and flexible at this point. What we're, what the city of Newport Beach and, and its members get, get out of hosting our team, other than the good, the feeling good, is we're going to have highly-publicized media days. And I know some people read our, our Sunday front page article in the OC Register a few weeks ago. We've been on TV media. We're going to be in Reader's Digest in June, so the media attention is there, and we haven't even brought the team out here yet to the U.S. National exposure for our businesses and individuals in the community. I mean, I know the city of Newport Beach, you know, works so hard every year in the tourism industry, and, and what great thing to add to that is that they support international water polo teams, especially those from third-world and war-torn countries. And it becomes a true event atmosphere. You know, everyone will be excited that the team's here, people will want to come and watch the team, whether it's from media or just, you know, people around the U.S. and Southern California that would like to see this team. Other benefits of hosting, athletes are to perform public service while here in the U.S. It's one of my guidelines as a coach, you can ask any athlete I've ever coached from club to high school, is that I make them perform community service. So whether it's beach cleanups, or painting and restoring a local landmark, wherever the case may be, you know, we're going to be there and, and help support the community that's going to support us. Speaking engagements at schools, I mean, imagine your kids here in Newport Beach, you know, having a guest speaker at their elementary school, middle school, or high school, you know, hearing about how it is to grow up in a third-world country that's been in the middle of war for thirty years with different enemies. You know, they could talk about the experience of growing up, or talking about the, the dream experience that they're living now, and, and how it is so different to be here in Newport Beach and other places in the U.S. Civic groups, you know, they could be an ambassador, ambassador to sport, or ambassador of Afghanistan, speak to civic groups, or business groups, or the Chamber of Commerce. There's so many different groups that they could tell their story to. And the one other thing I wanted to mention is that polio is, Afghanistan is one of the few countries left in the world that has not eradicated polio. And, you know, it'd be a great opportunity for the road route club, or medical groups, you know, for the Afghanistan National Water Polo players to come and speak about, speak about as well. And it's just a cultural change at a personal level. Most people here in this room, most people in Newport Beach have never met a person from Afghanistan, and I can guarantee you that everyone on the Afghanistan National Water Polo team has never met anyone from the city of Newport Beach. So it's a great way to bridge that cultural gap, because most Afghans are not bad. They are great people, they've just been in a very bad situation for the past thirty years. And, and this is what we're trying to do. Like I said before, we're trying to create national heroes, we're trying to tell the Afghans that it's okay to dream, and what better place to bring them here than Newport Beach? Any questions?
Well, do you have, like, a phone number or contact? I mean, there's a lot of people that watch this on TV that might want to volunteer on this.
Oh, that'd be great, sir. Our phone number is area code seven-six-zero-four-five-one-one-seven-eight-three. That is our world headquarters for Afghanistan Water Polo. And our website address is www.AfghanistanWaterPolo.com. And if there's anyone who'd like to donate, they could go on the website, they could donate directly on the website, or they could donate checks by mail, which that information is on the website as well.
Okay, great. Well, there's nothing like athletics to bridge international barriers, so I think it's a great thing you're doing here.
Exactly, sir. So I'd like to close up, sir. One, I'd like to thank Mr. Dave Kiff for giving, helping us speak to you today with this opportunity. And I'd also like the city council, if possible, to make some sort of resolution in this meeting or a future meeting about supporting our program.
Okay, well, perhaps you can talk with Dave or the city manager, and they can work something out on that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for everyone's time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a public hearing scheduled for a time certain, at seven fifteen or the next item afterwards. So we're going to move on to item number twenty, which is the first public hearing under our public hearing agenda. This is a hearing that was set for a time certain, seven fifteen. It's the appeal of the hearing officer's denial of use permit for 1216 West Valboa Boulevard, Newport Coast Recovery. And I'll turn it over to staff for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. David Hunt, city attorney, will be making the initial presentation, along with Jim Markman, our special counsel that's assisted us with respect to the ordinance in this matter. We are here for your second appeal with respect to a use permit hearing regarding group homes. This is the Newport Coast Recovery Appeal. This matter was decided by the hearing officer who denied the permit. The appeals come forward to you. It's the same standard we talked about when we talked about the Ocean Recovery Appeal. This is not a de novo hearing, it's a hearing dealing with what's called substantial evidence. It's the job for the council in hearing an appeal such as this is to review the record and make a determination whether there is substantial evidence that supports the finding of the hearing officer. That, that's based entirely on the record, so I would ask the council to focus on that, and I would ask the public and those who testified to focus on the issue of whether or not there was actually evidence before the hearing officer that supported his decision. There were two issues that were raised as preliminary matters with respect to this, this appeal. One was that we had a request for a stay of this proceeding pending a reasonable accommodation request on behalf of the appellant. I received an email from appellate's counsel withdrawing that request, so there's no longer a request for stay as that was highlighted in my memo to you. The second issue that's before you that is a preliminary issue is what to do with evidence that's acquired after the close of the hearing. Now, if you recall, I mentioned that this is a substantial evidence appeal standard, which means you look at the record of what was before the hearing officer. So normally, issues that come up after the hearing officer's made his decision are not admissible and cannot be considered by the council in making a determination on the appeal. If, however, evidence comes forward that could not have been reasonably presented during the hearing, and if it is relevant to the issues to be determined by the hearing officer, the council has the option to remand that evidence to the hearing officer for consideration. Such evidence, however, cannot be used in determining at this level whether the hearing officer's action was supported by substantial evidence or not. So that sounds like a bunch of legal gobbledegook, I'm sure. Let me try and make it simple. If you think the evidence that's later acquired is relevant and could not have been reasonably submitted at the time of the hearing, and you feel the hearing officer should consider it, your option is to remand it to the hearing officer for consideration. You cannot, however, use it in a determination of this appeal, even if you make those findings. So if you make those findings, it has to go back to the hearing officer if you wish for it to be considered. That having been said, you have an appellant before you, the Newport Coast Recovery. We also have a staff presentation that can be made after that. It's my recommendation that you allow the appellant to address the council on the issues, provide the appellant ten minutes, provide staff with ten minutes to address those issues, then open the public hearing, and allow for testimony from the audience. Then, when it closes, we'll come back and address the preliminary issue, and then ultimately, if you get to it, the substantial evidence issue. If you do decide to remand to the hearing officer based upon the latter-acquired evidence, you will not need to reach the substantial evidence issue that would not be before you. It would go back to the hearing officer for consideration. So with that introduction, I'd like to suggest requesting the appellant come forward to address the issue.
Okay, should we not allow him the option to rebut the public testimony also?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. My apologies. My suggestion is allow for ten minutes for appellant and then for staff, public testimony, and then allow staff and appellant. Appellant should have the close and do three minutes at, at the end. The appellant has the burden of proof, so my apologies.
Okay, and with the council's indulgence, then I'll, I'll allow the public three minutes to comment during the public comment period. So it'll be three minutes for each public member to comment during the public comment period, so I'll ask the appellate's representative to step forward, please. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Chris Brancard. I represent the applicant appellant, Newport Coast Recovery. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members. As was outlined by staff, this is an appeal on the appellate record that was compiled by the hearing officer. The appellate standard is set forth in twenty-nine-one-A, oh-four-oh. What we ask here today is that council vacate the hearing officer's resolution, two thousand nine dash oh-oh-one, and recommend to staff that the use permit be granted, and that it be granted in accordance with staff's recommendation that staff originally had proposed to the hearing officer. That is, that the facility be operated with a fourteen-bed limit. The applicant, Newport Coast Recovery, is and remains willing to live within that recommendation that was presented by staff but unfortunately rejected by the hearing officer. What is not at issue here tonight is the so-called after-acquired evidence, and it's not at issue here because it's not part of the record that was before the hearing officer. But I would say, more importantly than that, it's not at issue, nor would any purpose be served by remanding this to the hearing officer, because essentially what you've been presented with in the after-acquired evidence is a question about licensure. And there is only one entity that is competent to go ahead and conduct an investigation and make that determination, and that is the licensing agency. That's not something that can be done by the hearing officer. What is at issue is whether or not there is substantial evidence in the record to support a finding, the two adverse findings that were reached by the hearing officer. The appellant claims there is not, and I think if you take a look at the resolution that was drafted by the hearing officer, you'll concur. Those two findings are, first, that the operation of this facility has a detrimental impact on the adjacent neighborhood. The basis of that is its proximity to three types of facilities, a school three-hundred feet away, a childcare seven-hundred-and-fifty feet away, and a quarter-mile away, two ABC licensed facilities, Fry's Market and the American Legion. What is fascinating about the hearing officer's decision is that nowhere is there any evidence to establish why it is that these proximate distances are relevant at all to a determination of an adverse impact upon the community. In fact, nowhere in the decision is there any evidence, competent evidence, that's presented as to what adverse impact there would be upon the community because of the proximity to these facilities, the school, the daycare, and the ABC licensed facilities. If you would, members, if you turn to the determination that was issued, which is what we're here to review tonight, it's page ten of the hearing officer's determination. And this is where he states, this is where he states the basis of the finding of adverse impact upon the neighborhood. He says, "These facilities," referring to the school and the daycare, "these facilities, quote, 'could, could be affected by the use due to residents of Newport Coast Recovery using the open recreational area associated with the elementary school, and the potential for residents of Newport Coast Recovery to loiter, smoke, and engage in offensive and disruptive behavior incompatible with the nearby school and daycare." Members, that language is not substantial evidence. That is nothing more than speculation as to what could happen, and it's the worst type of speculation that- of speculation that goes to the core of the problem that we're going, we're confronting here with this ordinance. It's speculation that's based upon discriminatory stereotypes. That is, that individuals in recovery, to quote the decision, "loiter, smoke, and engage in offensive and disruptive behavior." The staff has presented a staff report to you compiled by Mr. Kiff with the assistance of his staff members. They identify a number of, or I should say, a handful of anecdotal excerpts of testimony that was provided to the hearing officer in which individuals complain about some conduct at Newport Coast Recovery. Now, I do not want to minimize those complaints at all. One individual complains that on two occasions, there were vans that were blocking the back alleyway. He also complains that someone put trash into his trashcan. Another individual complains about noise, noisy music. Another person complains that she can smell smoke when she walks by the location. Each one of these is a significant quality-of-life infraction that means a lot to these individuals. None of them, however, constitute substantial evidence that justify a denial of housing. What they do justify when an individual confronts an infraction, a quality-of-life infraction, is calling the police, because what we have right now is a system in which individuals come before the council or hearing officer months after a quality-of-life infraction has occurred and make allegations, untested, that we will never get to the bottom of. If indeed these allegations are occurring, these infractions for quality of life which are important to individuals, the proper course of action is to contact the police who can ascertain at the time, is there a problem and what is the source of the problem. I want to turn your attention to the last, and I think the most pernicious, finding by the hearing officer, and that is this claim of over-concentration. Based upon one sole fact, the hearing officer determines that there is an over-concentration of care facilities, residential care facilities, because Newport Coast Recovery happens to be 300 feet from Balboa Horizons. Now, there is no finding whatsoever, other than that simple fact, 300-feet distance, that it would cause any adverse impact upon the community. More importantly, when you drafted in past your ordinance 2008-05, one of the purposes that were stated by the council, the stated purpose, was to benefit the disabled, to avoid the appearance or the creation of institutionalized neighborhoods. None of those findings are made by the hearing officer. In addition, of course, the applicant has challenged, and well-challenged, the legality of the ordinance as applied in effect and on its face. But I want to conclude here tonight with this. The standard of review is substantial evidence. What you have here in the record that's been presented to you by the hearing officer is speculation based upon discriminatory stereotypes. There is no substantial evidence to support these particular findings. The anecdotal evidence that's provided, these are significant issues that impact individuals' lives, but the solution is, at the time they're occurring, to contact the police, and let's get to the bottom of what is the problem and what is the source of the problem. What I would ask, then, is that you not remand this for further proceedings to a hearing officer who's not the competent person to make the determination based upon the after-acquired evidence you've had. What I ask is that you vacate the hearing officer's determination and direct staff to create a new resolution, a resolution that's modeled after staff's own original recommendation of a 14-bed limit, bring it back, and approve it. I want to thank you very much for your time. Thank you, members.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll have the staff give their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Dave Kiff, Assistant City Manager, and along with Janet Brown. We served as the city staff in this public hearing on Newport Coast Recovery. I did provide a fairly detailed staff report that has been available to the public and for your review. I just want to summarize the conclusion that staff made in the memo, and that was that the hearing officer did act based on substantial evidence in the record, and that was what we were asked to analyze as a part of this document coming to you in the appeal, and we did affirmatively define, based on our knowledge of that hearing and the record, that he acted based on substantial evidence. I don't have any further report to add except that.
Okay. Is any other staff member going to make any presentation? Is that it?
Kit Bobka. I'm Special Counsel for the city. I'm not going to retread the path that Mr. Kiff has already passed for us now, but I will make two quick points. The first one is simply to question my learned counsel's description of the evidence in the record as anecdotal, and I'll point you to two different things. The first one is, is that one of the neighbors who has a home directly adjacent to this business, and make no mistake, this is a business, complained about some expansion that had occurred, and he was worried about it being a fire hazard. Now, as you all know, the separation between your homes on the peninsula and in the city is many times a matter of feet, if at all. And this guy came in here, and he said, "I know there was a fire there. The wiring there was, was substandard. There were no permits pulled. Basically, it was, it was a job that was done under cover of darkness. And they're, they're endangering me and my family." I don't think that's anecdotal at all. There was another situation where one of the neighbors came in, and he said, "Listen, I have tenants. I can't keep a tenant." Why? It's not because of some anecdotal thing, no. It's a very specific thing, and it's the problems that I have with the applicant." Is that anecdotal? That guy didn't seem to think so. The money he was losing from his tenants not being there certainly isn't anecdotal. So the city, as, as counsel for, as counsel for the staff, we questioned very strongly whether anecdotal is in fact correct, and it isn't. It just isn't. Too many neighbors came in here with specific evidence about this particular applicant to call it anecdotal. With regard to the second issue, whether or not to consider the newly acquired evidence, it's the city's position and staff's position that if there was newly acquired evidence from the applicant, it would be proper to remand it to the hearing officer. It just so happens in this case that the newly acquired evidence is city evidence that we came by during the course of our regular city business. Now, having said that, as counsel for the staff, I have to argue very strenuously that you should not consider that evidence. That is not before you tonight. I agree with my, with opposing counsel. What you should do tonight is simply remand it to the hearing officer so that everybody gets a chance to argue about what is or isn't evidence, whether this is something that should be considered at all. But at least at first blush, this is definitely evidence that weighs and bears upon this issue, and that we believe, as staff, should be in front of the hearing officer, because it is germane, it is very germane to the issues in this case.
What is your response to his comment that this was, the hearing officer's not the right person to hear this?
We disagree. This is, this, the administrative, the administrative procedure that we've set up is, has been very meticulously crafted so that the hearing officer is independent. And again, you need to look no further for, for evidence of the hearing officer's independence than, again, from what my opposing counsel said. He said, "He wants you to do what staff recommended. I'm counsel for staff. The hearing officer did something completely different. He's making his own decisions." The way that we've set this administrative procedure up in this city is that he's the guy who gets a first crack at that, and the fairest way for this to proceed is for opposing counsel to have an opportunity to look through their police reports, to look through whatever other evidence that there is, to present whatever story that they have about what happened or didn't happen to the independent hearing officer, for him to render an opinion. That is not for you all tonight, in my opinion. So those are the two things. First of all, we don't believe that this is anecdotal. If you do decide to go forward with this decision, we believe there is substantial evidence in the record. Secondly, but more importantly, we would ask you to remand this to the hearing officer so that he can look at this evidence in the first instance.
Well, what is, what is your response to his claim that the hearing officer isn't appropriate because it's a licensing issue?
Again, we disagree. The, there's, the issue here is, is a land use issue, and the hearing officer is the one that we have set up to make the land, these land use determinations. I think your city attorney and my colleague will probably answer this in more detail, but we believe that this is a land use issue. This is, this may have something to do with licensing, but that's a separate argument entirely.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does that conclude the staff presentation, then? Okay. At this point, I'll open it up to public comment on this item. And again, remember, public comment is limited to three minutes, and there's a little box on the podium that has green, yellow, and red lights, and when the yellow light comes on, you have one minute left. So I'll invite anyone that wants to speak on this item to come forward, please. Okay, seeing no one. I'll stand up at one time here. I was hoping.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. Dick Nichols.
Three minutes, Dick.
Thank you. This is a, an operation that is definitely an integral operation. It's due to size alone. You're asking that even the allowance, when you cut it down, goes to only 14 beds. This is in a residential neighborhood. We've said that these are, just as we did the homes where you have multiple people living, in the group homes, that this is not an appropriate place for the residential. You fought that in court. You won. This, this should be not, not even a question from now on. The closeness to the school is, is very much, again, a problem. It's something that they knew about, they're not apparently addressing. I, I believe that you, you have definitely an over-concentration in that area. It's obvious that these homes that are in that area are larger. You're talking about 14, 20, 30 homes, people in the homes. This is not six or under. This is not that model of, of discrimination because they're acting like a family. This is, this is not in that at all. The facility is definitely in the residential neighborhood according to our zoning and so forth, and we need to enforce that, and I believe that that should be satisfactory to house this type of unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm Larry Mathena, M-A-T-H-E-N-A. Briefly, a couple of different points. There very clearly is substantial evidence purely by weight in this over 600, 600-page evidentiary record. Very specifically, even though perhaps, and frankly, I do agree with the appellant, that the hearing officer's decision could have been far more artfully, far more harshly, far more precisely written, there's a huge amount of data, much more than mere anecdotal, to come to the conclusions that the hearing officer did. Specifically, there was video evidence of problematic behavior at the facility. There was other substantial problems. Over 40 petitioners from parents at the school provided a petition expressing their concerns. A former school administrator went, went into great detail as to the problems about having this type of facility so close to a school and the issues that it raises. Above and beyond that, on the over-concentration issue, there is dramatic substantial over-concentration. The appellant's arguments focus in terms of his specifics to the comparison to the location of Balboa Horizons, and in fact, in its specific claims, raise the issue that, oh, they were there first, and they shouldn't be burdened by over-concentration. The reality is, Balboa Horizons had substantial evidence in its record as to functioning as a good operator with no community problems raised by all the people around it, as opposed to this facility, which had numerous repeated ongoing complaints. A final point relative to licensure and issues that it might raise, two different things. Whether or not something's licensed is one point. Whether or not that evidence and how it was acquired and presented, and should have potentially been presented by the appellant, is another thing. And depending on the circumstances of that, whether or not one decides where licensure is, that in and of itself would be a grounds to deny a use permit in and of itself. So in conclusion, your hearing officer made a firm decision. He did so with a substantial evidentiary record in support of his decision. I agree personally that the decision could have been more artfully drafted, but ultimately the record exists to support the decision to deny. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Louise Fundenberg, F-U-N-D-E-N-B-E-R-G. I'm the president of Central Newport Beach Community Association. We represent over 500 people in the area, and we have felt very strongly that the hearing officer's decision should be followed by the council, and we hope that you will deny the use permit to this organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this subject?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Denise Oberman. I just wanted to make a couple of quick clarifications, and I request that these items be entered into record, because perhaps they were not articulated in the staff summary report to council, and for that reason, maybe the facts and testimony weren't as full or robust and, and as, as compelling as in fact they were based on the evidence and testimony presented. First of all, there is current actual over-concentration in this area. The staff report suggested it was potential for over-concentration in the area, specifically in the 11th and 12th Street blocks alone, and each of those blocks, by the way, factually is in the 300 to 330 feet, depending upon who's counting. These are the facilities that are known to exist there. 1132 West Balboa, which is Balboa Horizons, it's an 11-bed facility. The use permit for that is approved. 1115 West Balboa Boulevard, it's an existing 22-bed facility, Ocean Recovery, with a pending use permit. 1216 West Balboa, it's existing facility, 29 beds, which is the appellant, subject to appellant here, and the status, I guess one could consider pending. 1217 West Bay Avenue is stated or represented to be 6-bed facility, Ocean Recovery. 1129 West Balboa Boulevard, an existing 12-bed facility, not state-licensed, Perlin. And, and that facility, I am pleased to report, appears to have been vacated. We've heard reports that the people have relocated down the peninsula, but in any event, congratulations, council, it does appear that somebody acknowledged the abatement. And this listing that I just gave does not include the 1601 West Balboa facility, which is also a large facility, or a known facility on 9th Street. So approval of the 1216 facility would, would constitute three large facilities with a total of four known facilities within 300 feet of one another, based on known facilities alone. So there's nothing in the law that prevents the city from mitigating for over-concentration, and our understanding is that that is part of the land use scheme, and that is not just relative to group residential uses specifically, but generally that over-concentration is, is a land use concept that needs to be attended to very carefully by a city. Secondly, the report makes general reference to the residents' complaints. There's been a comment on this already. I just wanted to very briefly summarize some of the things that we did not find specifically in the staff report, but which were documented in the evidence that was made available to the hearing officer. First applicant, 30 seconds.
Okay, yeah, 30 seconds.
Thank you. Applicant failed to apply for, obtain previously required permits, CUP, FEP permits. Applicant made business license registration as a personal service rather than a residential care business, even though it was clear that he knew his business was such since he registered it with the ADP as a residential care business. it with the ADP as a residential care business. Applicant did operate an illegal residential care facility across the street at 1219 West Balboa for several years, which the city is aware of and which the appellant has conceded he operated. And the applicant there received supervision and treatment at 1216 West Balboa, which was closed at some unspecified date according to the appellant. So the applicant continues to make excuses for failure to comply with various city codes and ordinances, and I believe there are others listed in the staff report. And I think the thing we need to ask ourselves is, is this an applicant that is prepared to be judicious? Has he demonstrated that he can, in fact, operate his business? And the business impacts neighbors not only immediately around the residence, but also in the open area, the playground, the school, the beach. And I can personally attest to that, as can the other 83 people that attended the use permit hearing, about a half of whom gave testimony there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay. Is there anyone to speak after this lady? If you do, come down on the aisle, please. Got a long meeting tonight. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Sorry, I wasn't going to speak. My name is Sarah Abraham. I live at 908 West Bay Avenue. I was here a couple of weeks ago when the facility at 9th and Balboa was approved, and that's around the corner from my home. I understand that at 1217 West Bay Avenue, a facility will open soon. The facility in question today backs up to 1217 West Bay in the alley, and I feel that that's an over-concentration, plus two more in the 1100 block. And as a, you know, someone who lives in the neighborhood, I just feel it's too much. And would, you know, I know Denise, I know other people in here, and we all feel it's too much. And if you would just consider the citizens and the homeowners in the area, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mustafa Soylamez, 407 Bolsa. I just want to make it known on the record that I absolutely believe there's an over-concentration, an actual demonstrated over-concentration in the area. Like to echo what Denise and some others have said, there has been, and it's come before this council many ti, in the past, specifically with different hearings and whatnot, for an attorney, an appellate attorney, to come before you and say, there's not an over-concentration. I just don't understand how that can be when there's demonstrated factual evidence here. Second of all, I don't appreciate, and I think I'd like to make this known to the council, I don't appreciate it when, again, appellate representatives or attorneys come before you and tell you what is going on in a neighborhood. I think the burden of proof falls on them to demonstrate that it's not going on, as opposed to the neighbors that it is going on. We have come before you on numerous occasions with specific evidence, and I don't appreciate this passive-aggressive behavior of saying, well, it is a quality-of-life issue, but it's not really a quality-of-life issue, so we're not going to discount it, we're not going to take that into fact. You know, I'm affected by this issue very seriously, and those are just my two points for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'll invite the appellant to step forward. Three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members. When we talk about the words "over-concentration," what we're claiming is that there are individuals who are disabled, living in homes in proximity to each other. And those are facts that are on the ground. But those don't constitute a finding that would justify denying a permit. And the important point that we've tried to make here tonight is that when you read the hearing officer's decision, that evidence is not there. There's a second and more important point that the council will have to come to terms with soon, and that is, who in the structure of authority is the competent person to decide these various issues? It is, for example, our claim tonight that the hearing officer is not, nor could the hearing officer ever be, the competent person to decide the after-acquired evidence. There's only one entity and agency that can do that. The hearing officer can impine, the hearing officer can look, but he cannot decide. And there's only one competent entity that can gather the evidence and apply the proper determination. But the second, I think, more important thing, because it impacts more directly on the council, is, who is the most competent person to decide when the quality of life issues, and I don't mean to minimize them passive-aggressively or otherwise, one quality of life infractions occur? It is not this council or the hearing officer, two, three, five months later, when people come forward and say, this happened outside my home. If there is a genuine infraction on behalf of Newport Coast Recovery, what we would like to see is that the police be called and a determination be made if there is indeed a problem, and if so, what is the source of that problem? We accept that responsibility as being a responsible member of the community. But to have individuals come forward and testify, or not even testify, present these materials to you that we cannot determine, whether it be wiring, none of us will ever know whether there was a wiring problem when a dryer was put in. None of us will ever know whether music was too loud, or perhaps it had poor lyrics. We will never get to the bottom of these things because we are not the people who are on the ground that can decide those facts. Those are determinations that have to be made by police officers who can determine what the problem is and what the source is. And that is a fundamental problem with what's occurring, I think, in the process here tonight. At bottom, there is no substantial evidence to support these particular findings that were made by the hearing officer, nor would we benefit from a remand. Accordingly, what I would ask is that we vacate the hearing officer's determination, and we direct staff to redraft one that could be entered in accordance with the original staff recommendation. I want to thank you very much for your patience. Thank you. Goodbye.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. And staff, do we have any additional thoughts you'd like to bring forward before the council discusses this?
I'd like to address the council briefly on the question of remand, which I am going to recommend to the council, because my obligation and function here is to be sure at the end of this process that whatever decision is rendered by the council is legally valid and defensible. And I think because, let me sort of recap what happened. Last week, some evidence came in the hands of city staff. It's been shared with the council, it's been shared with Mr. Brankhardt and the applicant. So everybody understands what that is, and yet you are now asked to go forward and make a decision and erase that from your mind. But I can assure you that if that happens, when we get to court and this is reviewed, some bright lawyer is going to say, contrary to what I'm arguing, that the council couldn't have erased that from the council's mind because of the nature of what it was. And so I suggest that, so that we have a defensible process, that that piece of evidence be presented to the hearing officer in a remand, that the applicant be given an opportunity to explain that piece of evidence, disagree with it, rebut it, or however they want to deal with it, and that the hearing officer can judge it as relevant or not relevant, as being entitled to great weight or little weight, decide whether to include mention of it in a resolution or not, and let it come back here on that basis. Then the fact that it was in your mind in the first place doesn't matter anymore because it's also in the record. Just don't like to have a piece of evidence that's out there in the public eye, in memos, distributed to all sides, and then ask the council, move forward, disregard that. I know you can disregard that, but I also know that when we get to court, someone will say, you didn't disregard it. And that's the reason why I'd ask you to adopt a motion remanding this matter to the hearing officer for the narrow purpose of considering that evidence and any response or rebuttal that is pertinent to it. Only a narrow remand.
Okay. Well, the staff recommendation is to remand it to the hearing officer for review of the after-acquired evidence only. Discussion, motion? Councilman Hen.
I do have a motion, but I have a question first of our attorneys. It was my impression that we should be considering the totality of the record before us, and there seemed to be a suggestion by the applicant's attorney, or the appellate's attorney, that we should only consider what was stated in the hearing officer's finding. Am I correct that we should be considering the entire record before us?
Yes, the issue is whether or not you, there's substantial evidence in the record before you. That's the appellate issue. It's not related to the after-acquired evidence. It is, what's the issue is before you.
But the record before you, I want to make clear, is the record that is in the hearing officer's transcript and what was presented to him. The record before you is not what was said tonight. It's argument by council's relevant, but it's not evidence, nor anything you heard after the hearing was closed. It's not evidence. You are limited to the evidence that was presented to the hearing officer, but all the evidence, not just what he may have mentioned in his resolution.
No, so that's clear to me. It's also clear to me that we should be observing due process here on behalf of all the participants in this proceeding. And so in the interest of making sure that that's the case, I'll move in accordance with special counsel's recommendation that this be remanded to the hearing officer for consideration of the narrow issue of the after-acquired evidence for him to make a decision.
Second motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Councilman DeGelton? Okay, that, please vote.
Motion carries.
We also have another item set for a time certain. It was set for 8 o'clock tonight. It's item number 22 under continued business. If you could clear out those of you that are leaving quietly, please, I would appreciate it. This is a milestone for the city. We're at the point where we're reviewing the concept design of the city hall. So this is the new city hall and park project, consideration approval of concept design, and direction for the schematic design phase.
us, for those who've been following and working on the city hall process. I'm going to just briefly introduce our architectural team, our design team, and they have a fairly detailed public presentation here, but we've scaled it down to about 20 minutes. I think you'll enjoy all the detail within it. There are some issues that we are not going to cover in the presentation that you might want to ask question-wise, but without further ado, you have a fairly detailed staff report in front of you. You also have, and I'll show it for the public's benefit, too, there's a document that, again, is about 90 pages, and it should be in color, called Public Presentation. You also have an older document that you might, that we might thumb through if you want to see some of the changes, but I would focus instead on this one, the one that says Public Presentation for tonight. So with that, I'm going to introduce Greg Matola with Bolin Swinski-Jackson.
Good evening. Thanks for having us come down and show you how we're doing with this project. We're pretty excited about how things are coming together. Tonight, what we want to do is give everybody an update on our progress since we last presented this, you know, as a design competition entry. And we've had a number of months now working with the building committee and the design committee and city staff, getting a lot of input, and adjusting the scheme based on the design input that we received. And I thought tonight, what we would do is we would go through all the issues that we've been tackling, and I think what we'll do is we'll actually start maybe looking at the larger-scale issues related to the site and the park particularly, and then we'll bring it back into a little bit more detail related to the buildings. So with me tonight is our principal landscape architect, Sarah Keel, and I'm going to ask her to join me momentarily to do that. And I was wondering, these images look much better when we can kill the lights, and hopefully that's okay for everybody, but. Let's see. Is that better? Okay. All right. So, let's see, yeah, this is the clip, or so there.
That's great.
Okay? Yeah.
First, let me say, we're really glad to be back here this evening. It's actually been a pretty enjoyable process to refine this and really make the park part of the project into something that we're excited about and to work together with the architects, bringing it together with the new building. It isn't very often that you get to build a city hall and its surrounding landscape. It might not happen in your lifetime, so it's a big honor for us to be a part of it. I'm going to run through and talk pretty fast, which is to say, at the very end, if there's something you want to go back to, we'd be happy to do that. But I'm going to run through a lot of the points that have gotten us here, just to make note of them, so that you know that we've sort of done our own due process relative to analysis as well as design. So obviously, this is a very significant site within the city that most of you all are already familiar with, and we believe, together with the architects, that the best places are made by putting together architecture and landscape, and that you get something greater than either could be individually. We've gone through an extensive analysis phase, looking at vegetation, looking at the wetland, looking at the slopes on the site, and sort of carried through a due diligence that was a request of the conceptual design process. We've had a conversation with the city staff, as well as with some members of the building committee, as well as in these public hearings about various different issues. I think one of the telling points is there are a number of things up there that cancel one another out, so we've listened quite a bit. And I think we have good direction, but that isn't to say that everything up there is actually happening. There's a range of things. We started off with a diagram that sort of looked at what wanted to be near one another, what sort of a program for this park might be, which was one of the big issues that came out of the conceptual process, that the park was sort of lacking a specific program. And we've worked from there into a real design for the park. One of the most sensitive issues as we've gone forward has been the things people like about the existing condition, and one of those main things is the view, the view back to both the bay as well as to the harbor. There are places on the site where people like the view because they can see. There are also places where they like the view because they can't see across it, and there's a berm there. And we've been attending to both of those. We've done some more specific study of the views, particularly from a car. So this is about every 200 feet along MacArthur, where your view opens and you get a broad water horizon versus where it closes and where it's blocked by buildings, and all of that is part of our thinking. At this point, we've come to a site plan that we're really excited about in terms of the number of different varieties of landscape experience that it brings, as well as the fact that we think it's done a good job of unifying the site from north to south. As many of you know, there's a 120-foot grade change across the length of the site, and the site is unusual in that it's quite narrow and surrounded by roads. I'll talk about the project overall a little bit, and then I'll go through sort of the different areas of it in greater detail. One thing that's been, something I wanted to point out with more clarity, is sort of the circulation and the parking. So the areas in yellow are surface parking or the parking garage, and you can see there's some up at the north end here. Right now, we're showing about 16 spaces, although I think that could be tuned and be as many as 30. And that'll be something we'll look at in schematic design. All of the pathways that we're showing here are ADA compliant, with the exception of a few places where we have stairs, such as right here, but there's a ramp immediately adjacent to it. But the intent is to have all of this be ADA compliant. The other thing that I think is helpful when looking at the overall plan is looking at the level areas. We talked a lot about programming and how, rather than paving or planting or anything else, one of the things that's most desirable for activities and programming is to have level ground. And so these are the level areas that are on the project site, and other than that, there's a lot of the ground rolling and making quite a voluptuous and beautiful landscape. There are two sort of overall conditions of the project. You have these very, very long foregrounds, so all along Avocado you have a long side, and all along MacArthur. And one thing we've done is to really work to pull those together with a particular planting palette. So along Avocado, we're working with what I would call a more subtropical and sort of wilder palette that's tuned for this area in terms of its water use. It's a little bit drier than some of the more lush tropical plantings that you see around this city hall, but then is paired to make places that are also good human-scaled experiences. On the north side, along Avocado, we're going with a more, also adaptive, and in this case also more native plant material, to make something similar to what is there now in terms of the mounding vegetation and the sort of continuous soft edge, and that's edge. And that side is more sort of churning towards the vehicular edge of MacArthur. This part of the site plan is sort of the area around city hall. I think it has the most importance in terms of serving as a civic space. There's a level of formality, a level of garden. It's a space that we would probably spend the most per square foot on, as well as have the most maintenance over time, and so that's involved in our thinking about it. It's linking together with the library in some ways that I think are very successful architecturally, and the landscape pulls through that area as well, as well as setting up what we think are some of the most important civic spaces that you will have. Within that space, and I'll point it out here first, there has been discussion about a tot lot, and then in discussions with the expansion of the library here, the idea of expanding the children's garden in this area. That's something that's probably the least developed in terms of the specific design, but the idea that it would involve places for reading, storytelling, and places for children's scaled adventure, and that's something that will be further developed in schematic design. As we actually get into the project, this is a section at the top that's cut right here, facing back towards the library. So you can kind of see the library in the distance here. This is the new piece of architecture that's making a terrace. That terrace will have a café associated with it. It both will be the receiver of what is now the view coming out of the library and into this terrace space. There are some trees and some movable tables and chairs, and an opportunity to sort of sit outside. We've also taken the olive trees that are in front of the library and run them from here up a little bit onto our side to sort of make a connection across there. As you actually get into that center space, which we've taken to calling kind of the civic green, you can sort of see the scale of this, the subtropical planting here on Avocado with the council chambers in the distance, the building of the city hall here, the civic green, the garage that you see here. The architects will get into this in more detail, but the garage has been lowered. I think some of you who've been in past presentations remember, we were just coming up to the view plane line. This has been pushed into the ground quite a bit, and the vegetation is now coming much higher than that and is much more natural on that side, which you see both here as well as here. On the inside face of that, there's a continuous hedge along the face, making a kind of formal green wall, but you get a sense of the character of that space. We really think of the city hall itself as being within a garden setting, and what's interesting, particularly in a glass building, is that on one side, you'll see one thing, which I've already talked about, is the foreground on Avocado, and on the other side, you will see these very formal, somewhat monumental clipped hedges that are a bit more contemplative and serious. And I think it, sometimes you'll be able to see both at once, depending upon how you walk. This is a perspective that's been taken within that civic green area, looking back towards the library. And you can kind of see how this space composes underneath the main circulation spine here with the pathways back into the garage, through the hedges, and then the area down here where we're making the connection back to the library. And you really get a sense of the scale of the space and the proportion, which I think is coming out rather nicely. We've looked at this also in terms of the numbers of people who could be in this space. We obviously want it to work for one or two. We do also want it to be able to serve for your once-a-year wonderful civic event, maybe as of yet unknown what that might be. And we've studied what would happen with events that just took place in this northern area, and also ones that would extend over the whole area. This is showing 1,800 people here. This is about 700. But the point being, there's a lot of flexibility for how the space could be programmed at many different scales. Moving forward, there's been a lot of discussion about the entry and how does it feel to arrive at city hall. This is directly across of Farallon. This is Avocado. So here's the slope coming into the entrance plaza, and the line of columnar trees that makes the northern edge of that plaza. And then here's a section from the northern end of the city hall building with that kind of porch gesture going up and into the wetlands. One thing that I think is important about this is that it's been a balance between sort of the more naturalistic wetland character of the center of the park and the more formal area here. The line of trees spaced so that at one view, they open up and you see through them, but in another view, as you arrive, they close and make sort of a wall of the space and really define this entry court, which we would hope to be our most elevated paving material, perhaps a stone cobble, but we'll be looking at that. But you really get this relationship of kind of formal lines and gestures here, and then seeing the more natural hillside beyond that we think is coming together. Within that area, you also have heard me talk before about these great views that you have. There are people who go out there now onto the site, but you do get these views back to the water, and this is a collage taken from the site now. We definitely want to have high points, the ability to get to view be a feature within the park, both for getting up and looking out, also for being something. You can see this is a mound in the distance that provides wayfinding and identity, and we think that could be done with planting as well as walls. This is a centerline section, and I'll do it both ways before we're done, coming through what is now the lobby of your library right here, and that first set of stairs is the one that you walk on right now. So your building stops here, and then up through the space. This will move forward, so this is coming through that civic lawn, stepping up onto the community court, going up into the wetland, and you can see the high point there beyond. But you can see then how the character really shifts when you get down into the wetland with that sort of wilder planting where it's low enough to have taller planting, San Miguel, going up to the northern parcel with the belvedere and the trellis, and then the dog park in that area. Go forward. The central parcel is perhaps the one that's the most similar to how it is now, although I think many of us haven't actually had a chance to spend much time there. I've crawled down there once or twice. There's a series of pathways in that area with two bridges that are really expressed as bridges across the wetland, which is shown in this blue outline. There's a third one here, which probably won't be expressed as a bridge, but because it's such a short one, but will still need to bridge across the wetland. And then the series of level areas that I showed in the diagram that will serve as meadows that could be used for many purposes, including picnicking. There's a lot of pretty good existing native vegetation in that area, and we would really amplify that as part of what we were doing. We would have a series of trails that were about passive recreation and getting back into this natural environment and bridges. And there are a number of existing conditions. So this is a shot of the site as it is now. Some of the animals that may be found on the site, and that we kind of consider those the other park users for this area. So we're designing it obviously for people, but also to encourage those animals. One part of that would be the removal of invasive exotics, so there's pampas grass and other things. So we're hoping to make this actually better nature, if you will, than it is right now. This is a section taken through the center area across that. So you can kind of see that you've got these level areas and this bird blind coming across, which is doubling as the bridge also to Avocado. And this is a view down within that, and we imagine this to be much more within the wetland itself with the bridge then serving as a bird blind that would allow you to get closer and potentially see more birds. Next slide. The northern parcel, this is what we perhaps made the most changes to since we've last presented in one way in terms of the overall formal geometry. It's been softened and made into more of one thing rather than two, but the same overall elements remain there. The planting palette for that area would have a grove of cherries or other flowering trees that might reference your sister city in Japan. We're looking at a tall tree that would make a forest, and we would be considering different kinds of conifers or other things, as well as planting on the trellis in that area. There is an opportunity, whoops, in the land adjacent to Avocado, where we've looked at the overall street width, and we've kept it, I believe, at 34 feet as a minimum width. But even with that, we have enough room to add park in here, which if you has a real plus for that northern parcel, which is otherwise a little bit isolated. And we've also looked at fitting in a dog park, and we're still studying this, but since we've last seen you pushing it down a little bit and giving it more protection from MacArthur. The belvedere then, and the dog park, really make up the two primary elements for this area. And you can kind of see the dog park in the background here and the belvedere in the foreground. This is another one of these, that same section, but going the other.
Can you explain what a belvedere is?
Oh, yeah.
Because I don't think that's a term that most people know.
Yeah, sorry. Belvedere is, means belvedere in Italian, which means beautiful view. So it's essentially an overlook. You actually have a lot of them in various places of Newport Beach with different views, but that's what this means. So quickly then, sort of running through this, you can see the overall grade change from the belvedere overlook, looking over the cherries, coming across San Miguel, going back through the wetland area and back down into the civic part of the project. And I think it, again, in a different way, gives you the sense of the variety of characters. I don't have to show all of that. This is the most pastiche of our perspectives, but this is taken from a photographs that we took on site of the view out. So you can kind of see the existing palms and pines on the corner that mark the entrance to Fashion Island, and the idea of this being, you know, a place that you just get up and see out above the cherry trees. I did want to show quickly then, almost in closing here, just the elevations along MacArthur. I think people will be happy to know that there is a garage behind this planting, but you really don't see it, which is pretty consistent with how it is now. We're still doing final tuning and we'll be studying this all the way through, but the idea that along MacArthur, there are places where you see what looks like the berm. There are places where you see right across the site, and there are places where you're obviously remaining, maintaining the existing vegetation. We do have a pedestrian overcrossing in the project that would be a new element, the belvedere here, and then going up into the forest. Here we go. We have a similar elevation along Avocado. So just quickly, starting at the library here with the olive trees, and then moving to the north, you can see the architecture and the repetition of these bays that have that very elegant roof, and then the council chambers, how the entrance works here with the high point beyond, the section then through the wetlands going up. This is really where you see the pedestrian bridge more going up into the northern area with that sort of datum of the cherries and the view up above here, going then into the surface parking along there. I would be irresponsible not to talk about drainage. One of the big things we want to do, in addition to choosing plants that have appropriate water use for your site and trying to use less water, is to get rid of the concrete channels and to go to things that are more naturalized. You obviously don't have a huge rainfall, so those things have to look good when it's dry. We've also talked a lot about how to get both public art, things for kids like the tot lot, and also a park course integrated. We really view this all as an overlay across everything else that we're talking about, and that they provide a kind of incident within this. We've done a specific art master plan, looking at where you might put monumental, contextual, or intimate pieces. So monumental, contextual, or intimate pieces, that is kind of a guidepost for moving forward, and we're hoping that items for a collection, it would be really a world-class collection, would come forward in this process, but we might only place one or perhaps two. And two caveats, we are beginning a long process right now, and a lot of it's going to have to do with plants, which we love, but which people are also very passionate about. And we're going to have to work with your local horticulturists and really understand tree size relative to your soils, plants relative to your soils, and everything else. And we look forward to working with everybody on making this a big success. So thank you very much.
I'm going to shift gears now and bring this in and talk a little bit about the design of the buildings related to this park. And so, one of the things I wanted to do is just to maybe set the context, to remind everybody about where we were back in September of 2008, and some of the comments that we got from the design committee, and some additional comments that then we got from the building committee. So the issues that we'll go through, this was the site plan that we started with back in September. And there's a number of things that they suggested we look at, and all of them were actually very good insights. And one of the benefits of having the opportunity to now collaborate with the building committee and the design committee and city staff is to really take a lot of that input and help refine this thing to make sure it really functions and works for you. But the, just real quickly, that some of the comments, as you saw in this report, relate to things like making the building circulation and the site circulation work more effectively, improving the link and strengthening the relationship to the library, studying the way the garage sits into the landscape and how it's screened, and how it looks from MacArthur in particular, the relationship of the council chamber to the community room, how we can improve that and make that a lot stronger and allow for use for multiple kind of venues. And, you know, back then, we had a, sort of suggested an amphitheater, and that was a question of whether we should have that. And I think, as you saw in the park site plan, that's been eliminated in favor of some other thinking about different kinds of event spaces. This is the site plan now around the city hall, and you'll see how it's been adjusted a little bit, even related to the way the building is oriented, the way the primary circulation that allows the building to be accessed by the public along multiple positions along this sloping site, is now, now creating this kind of more internal, internalized civic green kind of courtyard space that's bounded by the parking structure, the library at the head, and city hall. So let me, let me continue through this. And I also thought it would probably be helpful for people who haven't been looking at this every day like we have for the past few months, to remind everybody about the site. And you all know the site from driving past it. Some of you have walked up on that hill and understand how that grade works. But this is, it's a little dark, but you can see, this is the existing topography. Here's the library. Here's Avocado. Here's Farallon, and there's MacArthur. And the topography, you know, rises steeply behind the library. This is the view plane, and as you can see from this, this little inclusion here is actually existing topography is higher in some places than the view plane. So in order to tuck all this new construction into the site, this actually shows the excavation required to locate all these buildings within the site and stay tucked under the view plane. This is showing the proposed buildings now set into that landscape. This shows how the view plane has everything tucked under it comfortably, protecting those views. And then this is just an illustration to show the existing topography is merged with the new construction, just to make the point of understanding where the buildings are relative to what's there today. I thought that might be useful for you. We also, you know, during the competition, this is the elevation of the internal, I guess, the east side of the building. We have this kind of iconic sail feature that was, was a bit of an issue for a lot of people for how tall it was. And also, we had questions from the design committee about the flexibility of the way the building was laid out. So we took those, those comments and actually looked to adjust the way the, the building steps up, up the slope between existing back of the library and Farallon. And so, in, in so doing, flattened the building a little bit from where it was in the competition, which allowed us also to get that sail feature still in, but tucked underneath the view plane. I also wanted to point out a potential location for an EOC, kind of in that civic green under the library plaza is now shown in that section. Here's an aerial perspective, giving you a sense of the massing of these buildings. This is the city hall. There's the parking structure, the proposed addition to the library, and, you know, the park that Sarah's already described in, in some detail. This was the Avocado elevation during the competition, and this is a proposed rendering of that same view, a little bit now looking towards the entry position in, at Farallon. So you're seeing kind of the front door, if you will, to the city hall, the council chamber here, the community room there. I'm going to quickly go through the proposed addition to the library. So one of the comments was, we got, we had this opportunity to make a strong civic center for Newport Beach, and an opportunity to perhaps relate to the library in a stronger way than what we showed in the competition. So we looked at and worked with the library staff, as well as the city, to, to talk about what, what's possible here. And so what we discovered in talking with them was there, there was also a desire to increase some of the program available to have more people space in the library, basically an extension to the reading room, not necessarily more stack space, but more people space. They pointed out that that was one of the, I guess, that there were sort of three things that people, when surveyed, wanted to see in the library. And one of them was more chairs to sit in. Another one was a place to get an espresso, and the third one was an ATM. Oh, and let me also point out this box.
To pay all those library fines, right?
That's right. The rectangle here is, is a footprint of this possible EOC that we've been talking about, under, under the plaza. So these plans, this is a ground floor plan of the library, and this is the second floor plan of the library. And the way the topography works. And the way the topography works, the, you know, the main entrance of the library on its existing face, you actually, you know, enter in, there's that big public meeting room there. The main stair that goes up to that intermediate landing is actually, the proposal is to extend that stair up and would have the effect of having a second entrance now on the second level of the library that has a second kind of gathering space and place for an espresso bar and employee credit union, which would solve those two programmatic requests. And then along the face here is some additional reading room space for the library itself. And then down on the ground floor, there's also described desire to have additional space for the children's area, which would then also flow out into this expanded and added on to children's garden. We have some additional kind of service functions tucked underneath here, and the grade actually would go from just below, you know, the windows at this ground floor and slope up to this new civic green. So here's two kind of massing views of the library that show, you know, the existing form of that kind of butterfly roof and that clear story, the two-story reading room addition, and then the kind of this secondary entry zone pavilion that faces and forms really a good formal end to the civic green space that has this plaza that allows for a lot of kind of public space that would be a good extension to the library's functions as well as a good place for, you know, employees and the public that are coming to city hall. And then a view just looking in the other direction, so you can get a sense of that plaza and, you know, the nature of this proposal. We spent a fair amount of time discussing what's the best way to treat this parking structure. And maybe the biggest kind of controversy that came out of our last meeting with the design committee, which was three or so weeks ago now. And in understanding the importance of how this thing sits in the site and how to accommodate the 450 cars and make it feel tucked in nicely and screened well from MacArthur and from the streets above, we actually did a bit of a redesign since the last time we presented this, and were able to, just by doing a kind of a ramp reconfiguration, push this back stripe, actually, let me explain this drawing. So this is a kind of a pull-apart axonometric drawing of the garage, sort of if you pulled it vertically apart. So you see the footprint of city hall and the footprint of the library, the bottom level of the garage, which actually has good access directly out across the civic green so that you could park kind of anywhere along there and be able to walk across to various points of access. And then a couple of levels that spiral up above. Now, by adjusting this back position against MacArthur, pushing it down a little bit further into the ground, you can see that we're now a fair amount below that view plane, and that combined with sort of a smart planting strategy, I think we've solved this question about how's the best way to accommodate this. At least, we're feeling pretty good about it. This is kind of a blow-up section of that garage to really make the point that this position and this position are pretty important, you know, for what this thing looks like because it is a simple concrete parking structure. We've got this manicured hedge that Sarah showed you earlier, and then we have the more kind of naturalistic bermed planted edge along MacArthur. This is MacArthur. And you see the view plane there. I don't know, Sarah, what are we looking at? The one along MacArthur here.
It ranges along the length depending upon the grade in MacArthur, but it's anywhere between seven and fifteen feet.
Let's shift gears for a moment. Another comment that the design committee made, and then I think got some good feedback also from the building committee, was, let's talk about how we can make these public spaces. This is the community room, which is that flat floor multipurpose space and the council chamber. Make the spaces between them really work so that when you had public events that might actually use both the spaces, they could flow back and forth to one another well. So from the design competition to now, we've done some tuning of the plan for the council chamber so that we can actually share pre-function space, which is the kind of space outside of an event between the two, as well as kind of create this outdoor space, but it's shaded and protected from the elements with this overhanging roof. So you see that here in this rendering, you see the council chamber and you see the community room and its porch, and the space that I'm referring to is actually that space between, but then also kind of out in front of the space as well. And here, you're also seeing now the view down towards the library. Now, the city hall building itself, we've spent a fair amount of time refining that, including, you know, the way that the building actually has some modest stepping between sections or bays of it that relate to the topography of the existing elevations down by the library and up by Farallon. And we're really working to try to get this thing to relate to both. This is a, this diagram may be confusing, and yet it's actually useful for us. It's a way for us to understand what are the key programmatic relationships of the various departments within the city hall program, as well as these little triangles there relate to understanding where are good points of public access. So we don't need to go into a lot of detail, but there's been a lot of study on that. And then also, test fitting, you know, how these departments start to fit out in the space. We have a partial basement here as well that this is showing, that would be stacked right underneath this piece, and this is the second floor of the city hall. We also looked a lot at open space versus closed space in the building and how to make it a very efficient plan, as efficient as we think it wants to be. Trying to understand the balance between private offices and open office workstations. And in so doing, analyzed the needs assessment that was developed back in 2002. And what this diagram shows, that the spaces down here relate to what the needs assessment called for, which was actually a range of six different private office types and a whole bunch of different workstation types. And at the same time, we were hearing a lot of comments about how do we make this building really flexible and adaptable over time. So what we did is, in working with the city, actually looked at how are there, how can we kind of optimize this and not have just so many different sizes and make the plan a little bit more flexible? So what you see is how we've taken, you know, where two sizes were called for, we kind of pushed everything into the slightly smaller size and then demonstrated how you could outfit these different office sizes, a variety of ways to address the different functional needs for different departments that have different, you know, furniture needs. And so I think that starts to address some of those questions. And similarly, with workstations and conference rooms. And all of this is in the context of how do we create a really dynamic and interactive kind of work environment that fosters a lot of interaction between departments and gives people access to light and air and natural ventilation and the things that make a much more kind of appropriate workplace for the future. And this is also a good reminder to talk a little bit about the sustainability goals for the project. There's a stated goal by the city that we're pursuing, we're trying to pursue a LEED certification at a silver level. And so we've been working, both our design team with our engineers and with the landscape architects as well, to understand where are the opportunities to create a building that's really, really sustainable and the sort of big topics. I'm not going to go into the detail about what this all means, but the big topics addressing sustainability deal with things like energy and climate, water and ecology, materials and waste, occupant experience and community, and the idea of future-proofing and flexibility. So we did this brainstorming session with the city and talked about what are some of the goals that we have. That all helped us, at least at this point, understand that we feel like being in that kind of range for LEED certification at the silver level is a very doable goal, we think. And I think I also wanted to touch on the issue that was raised related to light and glare coming from the building, particularly as it relates to the views along MacArthur Boulevard. And, you know, the views along here and from the houses adjacent, we spent a fair amount of time studying this in great detail. We took, you know, nighttime photography to really understand the impacts of both this new construction, as well as understanding the existing context. We developed some strategies that would help to address this, both from what you see here, which are actually related to glazing system detailing, but also, we talked about appropriate light fixture selection, appropriate lighting controls that make sure the building isn't lit up at night, you know, that it's, when it's shut down, it's dim, and using things like dimmable ballast. So there's really a kind of a three-pronged approach to addressing light and glare issues from the building. This is really dark, but the idea is actually, this is one of the light simulations that we've done with our lighting consultant. And what you're seeing here, this is city hall, yeah, actually, that would be good if you could do that for a moment. Yeah, thank you. What you're actually seeing, this is MacArthur over here, so you see the streetlights. This is looking over the top of the garage. This is the civic green, so there's a little bit of low-level lighting proposed there. And then this is the city hall itself, and this is a view, this is MacArthur, this is the back of the library, and this is the garage. Now, what's important to note, that from this perspective, you're actually up high. So what I'm going to do is pull out of this for a moment and go into a animation. Actually, let me do this first. So what we did was, we ran simulations with our lighting consultant, and I'm not going to run through all these different movies, I'll show you maybe one of them, but I can show you later if there's more desire. So these, okay, so just for orientation, this is MacArthur, this is San Miguel, and this is Avocado. So the buildings are here. These are actually the existing streetlights along MacArthur. These are three different camera paths that we studied to really understand the impact of this new construction. This is a simulation, this is actually driving down MacArthur, and you'll see that the city hall is here, but you'll see that it actually is fairly invisible. This is the planted berm. And I'll show you one more, just because they're fast. This is along, this is along sea lanes here, up kind of a little bit higher, but you can see how the garage has really been pushed down into the ground. And then I'm going to just take this now and show you more of a daylight rendering of the whole thing. You can see, I'm just going to let this run. I think it's important to note the high point that in the park that Sarah mentioned is actually sitting right here, so it gets a really great view to the water. You'll see here that the garage is right behind this planted edge, and you don't actually see it, which is, I think, a good thing. Now, I wouldn't recommend driving like this, but this is sort of flipping around. You see the proposed addition to the library. Now, we're going to come down, back up Avocado and into the site. You see the council chamber here. This entry sequence that Sarah has described, and this is a little bit easier to understand it in three dimensions, I think. And then this is that kind of character sketch that gets at the kind of qualitative issues of the landscape that our massing model doesn't really do such a good job at illustrating, So here's our kind of front door, entry plaza. And now here's the civic green. And we're going to walk down this, and we're going to move to the right here in a second and just give you a sense of what the character, that landscaping is like, like that. I think I probably ran a little bit over, but I apologize. That's where we are with the scheme.
Okay. Is this time for council questions, Dave?
It is, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Gardner?
In the parking, did we at all ever consider automated parking so we wouldn't need as big a parking structure?
You mean the concept of drive-in and automatically move the car around? We haven't considered that to date, no.
It might be something to look at, and how much it costs to set that parking structure down, because there's an excavation and everything. My understanding is with those, that you can get more in, shorter buildings and smaller footprints. That's might be something to look at. I know they'd be glad to make a presentation to you.
Hey, Councilwoman Curry?
On the parking structure, that appears as though half of it is covered with a trellis and the other half is open. Is that accurate?
That's correct. What we looked at in designing this was actually considering views from MacArthur and from the streets above to see how much of that lid of the garage would be visible. And so the trellis that we're showing is actually trying to do as little as you need to, that actually would, just by the kind of perspective that you gain from being a distance away, that the partial trellis actually has the effect of shielding the entire view of the deck. So it's actually purposeful that way.
So if we were to model the impact of automobiles driving back and forth, getting in and out of their parking spaces, you're saying that that would mitigate all of the impact of those cars driving back and forth in terms of their headlights and so forth?
I think it would do a pretty good job, yeah. I mean, I would have to, I think I'd probably want to do a little bit of study if that was something that we wanted to look at for headlights, you're saying primarily?
Right, right.
You'd avoid that with the automated parking.
Well, you would. And in terms of the type of lights that are on the parking structure to guide people to their cars and such, those have been appropriately shielded so as to mitigate the light shed?
Well, yeah, I mean, we haven't specified fixtures yet because of where we are in the process. However, we imagine that we would be doing full cutoff fixtures that would be, you know, only throwing the light down. You wouldn't see anything of glare from the source itself, which is usually the problem, is the glare that you get. And actually, doing our photo survey, the biggest impact on that site is actually the streetlights along MacArthur.
And just one other question. One of the things that was kicked around early in the conceptual stage is the idea of a green roof, similar to what's on the parking structures at Pelican Hill. Have you looked at that, and is that idea at all feasible for the top of the parking structure here in a cost-effective way?
We looked at a number of different scenarios. Let me see if I can pull up a sketch here. There were four or five different versions of that that we did study. Hang on, bear with me for one second. I'm having a hard time finding it right now. But we studied intensive green roof systems, extensive green roof systems. We studied hybrid vine-covered trellises to make it green. We even talked about artificial plants up there. And in all those cases, we weighed pros and cons, and the solution that we've illustrated in this rendering is what we're recommending. And both from sort of, you know, the understanding of cost and the benefit and understanding where the money might be best allocated to have the greatest impact for doing what we want to do, which is to really minimize the appearance of these vehicles and any kind of headlight.
So what is the cost of this trellis solution?
Uh, boy.
Greg is looking back. We have our cost estimators here with CW Driver, so I don't know if...
We're figuring some down ones.
Robert, you'll need to come up in order to get on the record with the microphone, otherwise the people at home can't hear you. Thank you.
State your name, too.
Robert Schaefer with CW Driver, the chief estimator there. In our conceptual estimate, I believe we're concluding around $2 million for that roof element. That's bricks and mortar costs.
You actually have $2.5 in your report.
That reflects an earlier version that covered more of the structure. That reflects an earlier version that covered more of the structure.
Okay. Are there any other questions, council?
I don't know. Councilwoman Daigle brought up at the study session a question about the dog park. And I know we got a report from, I think it was, was it PBNR, about not recommending it. I hope that we will give it some serious consideration, because I know we've had a lot of requests for a dog park, and that's an odd-shaped spot there. And I know if we have a dog park, at least we'll be ensuring that it will get lots of use.
Absolutely.
Which it may not otherwise. And I know there's some objections, but I hope we won't discard it without at least serious discussion.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
If there was a dog park there, would it need to be fenced?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Daigle?
I would have to say bravo. I think everyone just did a great job designing it. It reflects a tremendous amount of hard work, and so, great job. And I think as we go along, I just want to make sure that we're, the community feels that we've adequately addressed the EOC issue and the glare issue and any of the pending issues that they have. But in spite of what seems to be a fairly significant aspects of it have been reworked, we've been able to stay on schedule.
Thank you.
I think that we're, I know when I first looked at it, I sort of was dumbstruck by the price. But as I looked at it in detail, it seems like we've kept the City Hall cost pretty about what we had said it was going to be. And what it is, is the expansion of the library, for example, which I think everybody will support. And so I hope that when we're doing this, we're real clear about the budget breakdown like we have in this report, so that people don't think that we're just putting all that money into one building and we've doubled our costs or something.
Yeah, I thought that staff did a good job of breaking out the components of it so that, because what we are doing here is we're creating a civic center. We're not, it isn't a city hall. It's not the same project it was when it was down here on the peninsula. Councilman Curry?
Can I ask a question? What is the sort of breakdown in terms of the park between sort of grass meadow area and natural area? What sort of, how does that divide percentage-wise, more or less?
How about, is approximate okay?
Yeah, sure, of course.
Approximately. The southern parcel, which is associated most closely with the City Hall, is primarily the area where we use the least number of native plants and the most lawn. The middle area is the area where we use the most of the sort of native plants and almost no lawn, although we would consider lawn for the meadow areas if that was something that the community directed us to. But we also think it could be mown native grasses and function pretty well. And then the northern area, I think in our perspective, we showed quite a bit of lawn, but I think that's also a question back and forth of what that really needs to be, and we'll look at that. Water use, more than any other agenda, is probably going to drive a lot of our plant selection and design. And I think that's a balance between trying to use as little as possible, but also trying to get the most value of it when you do use it. And so that'll be something that we'll be sorting out as we go forward.
Well, I would commend to you the value proposition, because I think the important consideration with the park is having a park that people will use to recreate in, and that should include elements like a totlot and benches and view areas and picnic areas and restrooms and things, and parking that's adjacent to the park that make it usable for people to enjoy when they get out and walk around in it. And just one question on the dog park, because I became a dog owner over the weekend when I returned from Japan. My daughter had a dog waiting for us. Are there, are there standards for a dog park? In other words, to separate big dogs from little dogs? I've got a little dog.
Um, there are.
Or anything as to those issues?
So, full disclosure, I have never actually built a dog park, but I'm on a bit of a research...
I've never used one either.
Yeah, okay. I'm on a bit of a research project. There are a lot of guidelines, and I think we'll do some visiting now, if this is a real item, and go forward. He has a dog. It's going to interrupt me. Go ahead.
I was going to say, there aren't, well, to our understanding, there are no guidelines, but there's good practice.
Yeah.
And so we would be looking to do best practice there for the size that we've got. I think the question about whether you provide a separate area for small dogs is something that we should discuss, because you could do it, but you don't have to. I've been in dog parks that have it, and I've been in dog parks that don't. I've been in dog parks that have grass. I've been in dogs that have wood chips. I've been in dog parks that have...
Paving.
Paving. I've been in dog parks that have decomposed granite. And all those paving surfaces have pros and cons. And there's an aesthetic condition. There's a maintenance condition. All those things need to be sorted out. But we think it's actually a really smart use of that piece of property, because it's such a funny shape. It'll draw people there. We're able to accommodate parking for it, so I think it'd really work well, actually.
Dog parks can have jurisdictional issues. I know there's one in Santa Monica at the edge of LA, and the LA people want to use the dog park, and Santa Monica people won't let them. So there got to be...
Well, I think we've been borrowing Laguna's and Costa Mesa's and hunting beaches long enough. We should have our own.
Councilman Webb?
One of the things that our PBNR commission mentioned was that we don't have a dedicated totlot. And I think that, I'd like you to go through and describe some of the thoughts that you had relative to how that use would be handled.
This is all not meant to be personal description, but I do have a two-year-old, and so I spend a fair amount of time at totlots. And the critical relationship of a bathroom to parking to a totlot is really a lot about its success. And in terms of the site, where parking and a bathroom and so forth can all be accommodated near one another and near level ground, we really felt like there isn't the obvious place to put one. Not all parks have to have totlots. And I, in some ways, both with the art and with sort of kids' things, I really believe it's sort of more generous to the kids, who are your future citizens, to say, "You're welcome." A lot of different places, some places like the children's garden at the library are more for you and tied to library program, but you have a lot of other totlots around. And I think that the overlay of children's programming and the children's garden are going to do things that are for kids without it being another totlot.
Where are the bathroom facilities that would be used by this?
So there's one bathroom facility that's tucked into the corner of the community room at the north end of the civic green, but could be accessed from the outside.
Designed to be that way.
And designed to be accessed from the outside. There's obviously bathrooms in the library. There's then been a long discussion about whether or not there should be other bathrooms within the park. So Greg's pointing out the bathroom.
So, yeah, behind the community room, accessible from the outside, bathrooms here that we felt was a way to get double use out of a facility and not have to build a freestanding structure that has a big cost implication and some technical questions about how to deal with the wastewater and so forth.
There was just a lot of discussion about whether or not there needed to be a bathroom in the north parcel. That went around and around and ended up where we are now, which it doesn't have a bathroom. It has been pointed out by some people that there are public facilities at the...
Oh, CTA.
Yeah, yeah, there as well, although it's not right there, obviously. So I think there are pros and cons, and that's something we could continue to look at. But in our current recommendation, there's no bathroom there.
Okay. Councilman Hen?
I, too, am very impressed by the architecture and all of the features that have been designed into this. Should we get the lights back in? But at the risk of feeling a little bit like Lynn on Dancing with the Stars, I do want to raise a few reservations. And they have really nothing to do with the program components, because essentially what we've done here is given everything to everyone that they wanted. We've got more library. We've got beautiful parks. We've got a dog park. We've got an extra 3,600 square feet of interior unassigned space for staff. When we add all of this up, we've got an $84 million project, hard cost. And that compares to about a $60 million project when, at the inception of this design refinement stage. That's a 40% bump. Now, I know we've got program elements in here. There's a community room and some other program elements that are additions and features, more library space, et cetera. But, for example, we've spent, between lowering the level of the project and the trellis going over the parking garage, we've spent probably four, four and a half million dollars just on view plane issues. And I don't necessarily disagree with any one of those individual items. The problem I have is, when I add it all up, when we include soft cost here, this will be a $100 million project. We have a facilities financing program, or I should say, a facilities replacement program, that includes way more than City Hall. It includes a new police station, fire stations, parks, et cetera. And we know we're in an environment here where the cheese is more binding from a fiscal perspective. And I very much worry that spending this magnitude of money on this project will cause us to regret the loss or substantial deferral of other projects that we have in the city that are also long-lasting in importance, some perhaps even more directly public-serving than the totality of this project. And so, you know, I have a lot of reservations here, mainly because of standing back and adding up all that we have done here. I think the Design Committee and the Building Committee have done a wonderful job with the design of this project and staff. And I know they've worked very hard on it, but I think we have to think long and hard about spending this much money on this project. And so I guess I have a question or two. I know part of what we're about here is to set up a conceptual design for an EIR. And we need to be careful not to be too restrictive in the description of the project. We want to make sure that we do an EIR that captures, in effect, the maximum impact of what we're thinking about in the concept. And so I've got a lot of allowance for allowing, for moving forward with program elements here in the EIR, for an EIR purpose that may or may not survive to the final design and by the time we're done. But I guess my question here is, is it our purpose to dual-track this, such that when we approve this conceptual design and get launched on the EIR, we are also going to move forward right away with detailed schematic work on this project in a parallel path, such that by the time we get done with the approval of the EIR, we will in fact have a final designed project that will look pretty much like what we saw, seen here, without any further consideration of some of the programmatic elements that are actually new to this project? And of course, the expansion of the overall building envelope, the expansion of the interior program space. It's not just a matter of the percentage between the interior space and building the gross square footage. Both have expanded. And so my question is, I'll say it again, and then I'll shut up. Are we going to go ahead and design this building based on this concept over the next six or seven months? Or will there be a genuine opportunity to reconsider some of these program elements and make darn sure that if we do actually build them, we really want to, and we really want to spend this much money?
That's not something the architect can answer.
Now, who are you asking that of?
Well, I suppose the Building Committee or staff. I wasn't expecting the architect to answer that question. But I mean, somebody must have a view of what the process is and whether or not we will be moving forward in parallel, such that in six months, it's a fait accompli and not much chance to discuss something.
Well, I guess, I'll take a shot at answering it, because I guess the way that I look at it is that we're moving ahead with the, moving to the next phase, the schematic design phase of this process, to further refine this plan to the point that when the fall comes around, we can give the architect direction to move ahead on construction documents. And at that point in time, if we find parts of it to be too expensive, or we want to drop them out for one reason or another, we can make the decision at that point in time, phase it, or drop them out altogether if appropriate. But at this point in time, we're moving ahead with this design. And I think if you have some serious reservations of something that you think should be excised from the plan right now, I think now's the time to say it. But otherwise, we move ahead with it and can make that decision in the fall when we go through the schematic design phase. And I assume by that point in time, we're going to have an update of the facilities finance plan, gone through another budget cycle. We'll have a better handle on our finances and be better prepared to make the kind of decisions that you mentioned.
Well, I'm not sure what you were telling me, honestly. Will there be a genuine opportunity to reconsider the size of the interior space that's in this plan, the addition of the library element?
I think the, I think the size...
The increase in the interior staff size that's implied by this plan, which is well above what we were originally looking at. And so will we have a genuine opportunity to reconsider that?
I think we're pretty much moving down the path of the building size itself. I was really kind of describing the elements that the staff laid out in their staff reports, how they broke the project up. As far as the City Hall itself goes, I think that, you know, this is the time where we're saying what size the building is. I mean, if we want to make it smaller, this is the time to say, "Make it smaller," and give the architects the direction over the next few months to do that. We had those discussions in the Building Committee and discussed the pros and cons of it. And I think as a group, we came to the conclusion that we were better off to leave the design as it is. There's, I think the staff and their memos have given the rationale for the changes in the building design. All square footage is not equal. All square footage does not cost the same. And you can start cutting square footage out of it and make the building look smaller, but it doesn't mean you're cutting out the most expensive square footage. And, you know, you're moving things around a lot. I think that, you know, our committee felt that the integrity of the design that was presented to the City Hall Design Committee, if we started messing with circulation spaces and other types of things, it could reduce the square footage down, would harm the design of the building.
Well, okay, I appreciate that. But we are talking about 23,000 more square feet on the gross size of the building and another 10,000 square feet on the interior size. By the time you boost that up with circulation space and whatnot. And a large portion of that has to do with more room for more staff in the building than we were originally considering. And unassigned space and that sort of thing. And so I guess my view is, well, I'd be glad to listen to...
Yeah, but then, Councilman Hen, the square footage isn't all the same. It's like the, for one example, the mechanical equipment on the design, the old design that we had, mechanical equipment was on the flat roof of a tilt-up building. Now we have an architecturally designed building, and we have to find an interior space to house the mechanical equipment. So right there, there's 6,000 square feet, right there.
I can get to 5,000 or 6,000 square feet that has nothing to do with that.
Why not? I was just using that as an example.
And I would completely accept your statement if it weren't for the fact that the total cost of the project has risen from 60 to 84 million. That's a 40% bump. I mean, so I know all, not all space is the same, but when I stand back, there's a big jump in the total cost, really big. And my concern is, twofold, actually. It's for this project, but also for what it may do to all the other things that we need to accomplish in the city over the next 10 or 15 years with our facilities. So, you know, I, for one, am not comfortable moving forward in an irrevocable way here until I do understand what the impact is for our whole facilities replacement plan and what's going to have to be the give-ups associated with, not the base spending here, but the additional spending.
Councilman Webb?
Seems like that, again, I'm only, I've been around too long, unfortunately, I guess. But every time we get down to this point in any major building that we've built in my experience in the last 40 years, it seems like that argument is used. And we use it to cut down, remove square footage, to make a cheaper product. And that's exactly what we get. And we're building a structure here, which hopefully is more than for the next 50 years. We hope that we have a little room for expansion... We hope that we have a little room for expansion from within and that we don't immediately move into a facility like we did 25 years ago when we built the structure out back to where it was in use for maybe a year before circulation spaces were being used to house the employees that were necessary. We've tried, at least the staff I feel has tried to massage and look at every space they have that, yes, they have provided some areas that are above and beyond what was in the 2005 design. They've tried to look at not making large spaces for people. If you looked at the design for the various different cubicles and stuff, they've tried to cut down or minimize the different types of uses to where there's very few spaces that are confined and large, what you would call, large lavish offices. So, most of them are the general-use facilities. But I guess that, I'm frustrated and I know that the cost is more than we thought we should, or at least originally considered. But I would really caution about trying to restructure our structure to the point where we're meeting a certain dollar amount rather than trying to meet the needs within the community. I think that this project has taken into consideration, as it's gone into the more complete design process, a number of things that were not really initially considered. And a lot of those are related to park uses. And like for instance, a pedestrian crossing over San Miguel. I think that we have a much better idea now of what can be put in up in that area to make it a very usable area. And so, I think that, I really feel that as we go through this project and extend, that we need to have what we have proposed today with, yes, if, as we go through the schematic process, there are some economies that can be made, that we definitely need to look at that. But I don't see us cutting 20,000 square feet out of this structure in order to make it meet a certain price tag when we will need to have that facility 10, 15 years down the road apiece. And we want to have something that's going to last for a long, long time.
Well, you didn't hear me say any specific target for reduction in square feet or reduction in cost. I have no specific target in mind. What I'm asking is for there to be more consideration of some of these, not just concept refinements, but new elements to the project. And my concern again, isn't so much with any specific thing that's being proposed to be included in this concept. My concern is, how will that reflect into all of the other things that the city needs to accomplish over the next 15 years with its facility replacement program? That's my main concern. And I don't think we have a view of that today.
Okay. Any other comments up here?
Just to clarify, so I understand what you're saying, Mike. Assuming that we did have the ability to finance the City Hall as we're contemplating here today, as well as the other projects that we're talking about, the fire stations and parks and things like that that are in the facility plan, are you still objecting to it or you just want to make sure that it all balances out?
I first want to make sure it all balances out. I still think there are, there is some amount of scrutiny that could be associated with this project itself. You know, in terms of the staff, on the day we move in, there will be space for at least 50 or more additional staff people in this building, as I can tell. And that comes before conversion of conference space into office space, which inevitably happens all the time. So, you know, I mean, there's other elements of this that, you know, I think do bear some additional scrutiny. But the main concern here is that in the last version of the facilities financed, or facilities, I keep calling it financing plan, it's the facilities replacement plan is what it is. We had a cost of $75 million in there for the City Hall. Now it's 100. That's $25 million that has to be of additional requirement that's got to be picked up someplace. And I think it's a worthwhile discussion whether that gets picked up by the abandonment of other projects in our facilities replacement plan or the substantial deferral of other projects well out into the future beyond what we were originally expecting. And so, I think that's a valid question to be answered.
Well, I think so too. And so, I guess my question is, where are we with our facilities replacement plan analysis? And I guess that's the Finance Committee or, when do we expect to have that information?
The Council Finance Committee looked at a staff draft of that, asked us to go back and look at some other things. I think in particular, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was when we would anticipate getting money from development agreements and how that might impact the staggering of projects. So, staff is working on that. We'll come back to the facility, I mean, the Council Finance Committee again, I think on the 24th this month. So, then it will be for the committee to decide whether that draft plan is ready to come back to the City Council with the recommendation.
So, there should be some information prior to our next council meeting?
I would say hopefully at the next, well, probably the first meeting in May.
Okay, so we're basically a month out. As far as our schematic design or your next step in the process, how, what's our timeframe for that?
Our expectation is that schematic design, in effect, starts tomorrow. However, we need to pull together a contract amendment with the design team to bring back to you potentially within two weeks. So officially, it doesn't start for another two weeks, but we believe we have work that we can be working on now based on...
But I'm saying, what's the timeframe for the overall process?
The overall process, we're tying tightly to certification of the EIR at your second meeting in November.
Well, I'm not so concerned about the EIR. I'm talking about what they're going to be doing that might have to change if we decide we need to scale it back or for whatever reason. In May, when we have our meeting, we decide, gee, you know, we're not going to be able to accomplish, you know, our pie is only so big, we can only accomplish so much, we may need to make a change somewhere. So, how far along in the process are we going to be? I mean, you're not going to have schematic drawings in May for us, I would presume. I mean, was that a four or five-month process?
No, in fact, we did stretch out schematic design to meet the EIR schedule, so...
Yeah. Okay, so there's some fudge time here until we get some numbers back, is that?
Well, I just thought, yeah. I think, I think the sooner we nail this down, the better. I mean, obviously, we don't want to waste time designing things that are going to be taken out of the plan. So, the sooner this, that discussion can happen, the better.
Well, it seems like we've got two, two issues here. One is the size of the City Hall structure itself. I, I think the other components are really more phasing issues because we're doing a master plan. The schematic plan sets up a master plan that gets you into construction documents. But the critical thing is, far as answering your questions, Councilman Hen, I think, go back to the size of the City Hall building itself because that's where they start getting boxed in fairly quickly.
Well, the City Hall building and the library expansion and, you know, the associated elements, yeah.
If I could just say one thing, and I guess it's just my opinion that the facility financing plan, when it comes back to the City Council, isn't going to be a silver bullet. You know, it is predicated on estimates, it's predicated on the economy, it's predicated on different project costs. So, there's, there's a lot of flexibility there. And the plan was meant to have a great deal of flexibility based upon your priorities. Your priorities would come first and then there would be a give and take as to, you know, which projects would come later. And I think that is certainly worthy of discussion. But to base a decision on the facility financing plan that would be coming back, you know, to council within a month, I think it's an indication. Others may see that differently, but, you know, that is going to change over time too, as it changed, you know, tremendously over the last six months because of the economy.
If I could just amplify on that, I think Homer's exactly right because I spent some time with the facilities financing plan yesterday. And if you recall, the policy driver that comes out of that is an indication of the percentage of the general fund budget being used for capital projects. And so, into that is an assumption as to what the budget's going to be, whether it's going to be reduced based on the economy and based on how much the city can afford out of general funds to allocate to capital projects. And staff has made some recommendations about that. I will tell you, because I've spent enough time looking at the numbers, that the implications of City Hall at $100 million are that Sunset Bridge Park and potentially Marina Park and likely the Corona Del Mar Library and Police Station and other projects such as that are going to be deferred or delayed from the current schedule. Now, there are ways to mitigate that and to address that and to change some of the assumptions that go into the plan. But I think Councilmember Hen raises a very, a good point when he says there are ripple implications about the cost at this level relative to other projects in the city. And the challenge to us is to be able to address those effectively while at the same time building an appropriate City Hall and making sure that we've got the right value engineering going into what we're doing so that we're not overspending there.
Okay. Well, let's open this up to the public and then we can bring it back and have some further council discussion on this. How many people are going to want to speak tonight? Okay. All right, not that many, so... Okay, we'll open it up to a public comment. Anyone that wants to address us, step forward please.
If I put my thing out here, am I going to shut off this computer? Okay. My name is Barry Allen. I live in Corona Del Mar. I live in Harborview Hills, which is directly across the street from the proposed City Hall in the park. What I'm hearing tonight is very troublesome. You know, I was glad to hear the architecture presentation, everything was going very nicely. I was starting to hear things that I really liked a lot. They've made a lot of changes and improvements in the, in the product. I started to hear the word tot lot used. I started hearing the word picnic tables and areas where people could picnic, something that has not been heard at the Building Committee meetings, I can assure you. I'd just like to know if some of those areas they're showing over past the entry, if that's grass or is that just natural? Because every time I've seen anything, there's no grass except in what they used to call the great lawn. But I suspect that the people from San Francisco didn't know that the word great attached to anything wasn't very, wasn't a very good idea here in Orange County. And so, they changed it to, to something else. But it seems to me that's the only place there's any lawn. And the concern that I have beyond the issue of the parking garage and the height and things like this is, and Councilman Hen raises an issue that troubles me. And then I start hearing people talking about phasing. And I know what's going to happen if this gets phased. City Hall gets built and the park gets dumped on because that's where you don't have to spend the money because it's going to be a weed park. We all know what happens with weed parks, people don't use them. That's why we want this park developed on the same track as this City Hall. Don's up there laughing and several other people are smiling, but that's true. That's going to happen. We know that. Because when they got to put the hard thing in and they say, well, this is a cost we've already incurred, we could put off putting the paths in, we could put off these bridges. Oh, we don't really need these bridges up in the natural park. We don't need to put that, that very costly bridge that's going to go from the, from the Central Park over to the Northern Park. And all it's going to get phased out. And that really bothers me. I think that it's only fair to the people in the city who voted for a City Hall in the park, not a park next to a City Hall, that just as much emphasis be put on the park in this case and being built at the same time as the City Hall is built so that the two go on the same tracks. But when they have the grand opening of the City Hall, they also have the grand opening of the park built just exactly like these people were presenting tonight. And I also think that putting in grass and some picnic tables and things like that that were promised to us, the park shall have, as I emailed some of the people on the council, that's what it said in the, was given to these people to design, shall have restrooms. You can't use that park without restrooms. Now, that's enough on the park. I want to talk about the parking structure. I think they did a wonderful job on the parking structure with a lot of talk about it. And I really think it should stay the way it is and it shouldn't be modified. I know that there's some great concern about the cost of the cover over the parking structure. Gee whiz, you know, you guys are the ones who made the parking structure, what, 450 cars instead of 350 cars that went along with the City Hall, because that's for the library. The other thing that I'm concerned about, and I've talked to several of you about this, is that one design element that they show, which is the phase to try and bring the library roof structure to sort of blend with the roof structure that you've got for City Hall. And the plans I saw tonight as to what it looked like don't trouble me in the least because they showed several views. It shows a very narrow area. It's not anywhere near as wide as I thought it was. And I think it's going to be fine. But my only concern is, is that the architects take into consideration the light that may come from that. Because one of the biggest problems in our neighborhood and the neighborhoods above me with the library was that large bank of windows that faced up in that area. And until they finally solved the problem, only recently by cutting down the lights, they're doing shades or something, that was a big light problem for people up there. And when I saw a similar roof structure being constructed, it troubled me because I thought that maybe that was going to create another light source for the people up on the hill. But other than that, I think the plans, I'm really happy with them. I think that's going very nicely. But I really want to emphasize that, you know, we got to build this thing all at the same time and not, and not just build the City Hall. And if something has to be cut back and you got to cut back 10,000 feet out of the City Hall, then take 10,000 feet out of the City Hall, do the work in the park. Because remember, it's City Hall in a park. Please, that's what the voters voted for and that's what we ask for. And the voters didn't vote on expanding the library. They didn't vote on a 450 parking structure. So, all these things were added for the benefit of the library. And that's increasing the cost. And people should know and be made aware of that's for the library's benefit, not for the, not for the City Hall. But I think the park is very important to people and it'll get used. It'll get used by people as long as it's got paths and picnic tables and things like that. And that's what we want people to do, is be able to use that park. That's Newport Central Park, it was named a long time ago. Thank you very much for your time and I appreciate all your hard work and all your hard work. You've done a great job. Thank you very much.
I do have a couple of comments. One of the things that we were concerned with back some time was the circulation and how would that be accomplished? And in particular, the circulation plan showed that we were going to be cutting Avocado off at San Miguel and actually you wouldn't be able to go up Avocado beyond San Miguel. And we would then be circulating through the whole center in order to get back around if you came into San Miguel and wanted to go down to the City Hall. And I was wondering, that's not shown. We're not really addressing that problem at all. We're kind of just saying, well, it doesn't exist, or at least I haven't heard it at all. I think that should be mentioned, it should be talked about. The other thing I see is that we're kind of bringing a public park kind of like into City Hall, it looks like. Are we planning to leave these parking structures open so people can freely go in there to use them, to go to the library, to go to the dog park, to go? And is that something you want to do? I don't think that makes a whole lot of sense. I think if we use that upper area maybe for something like that, that makes some sense. But I'm, my question is, is I don't think it mixes too well. I think you want a City Hall that you can kind of close down a little bit or that you have your facilities, your main common facilities either toward the library or maybe up, just keep them up like by the parking lot that was with the Upper Park. But do we want both is what I'm questioning? And is that something you really want to see where you've got pedestrian traffic going through City Hall to go from one facility on one end to the facility on the other end in a daily manner or in off-hours on the holidays and this kind of thing? Do you, do you want that to happen? I don't know on that. That's something that I'd like to just see you address. And otherwise, I, I'm not complaining. I think we, I think it's a shame to hide City Hall, at least from coming down MacArthur. You should be able to see this. I mean, we're paying $100 million now for this thing. And that should be something that our, our citizens can see, that we do see, that we, it's a focal point of our community, not hidden from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Thank you, Dick.
Hello, my name is Denise Woltmuth. I'm a Corona Del Mar resident, and also Harborview Hills resident as well. And first of all, I'm pleased with a lot of progress that's been made with City Hall and the park. I think, I urged the city council a number of months ago to be a good neighbor to the neighbors that are close by there, and I think a lot of the changes that have made actually have accomplished that very message that I gave. Couple of things I would like you to continue to monitor and concerns from the areas, and that first one is about lighting. And the lighting really goes into a couple areas. I am concerned about the new addition to the library and the potential glare and lighting that can be there. Although some people may think that the lighting has gotten better recently, I personally, from my view, can say that I have seen no change in it. And I've been led to believe that there is some kind of shading or things that can be done in the library now, but I think using that just is not a very useful way to do it, so I think we need to make sure that we don't get increasing light and glare from the new addition. The second thing that I really wanted to bring up is also to support Barry's comments about City Hall and the park. When this measure was voted upon, the way that it was really given to the public, and I think the public's intent in voting for the City Hall and the location it currently is, is that they saw that it could successfully meld with a park, and that we could accomplish two things both in one space. And so any phasing, I would be entirely disappointed with, because it certainly wouldn't meet the public spirit of wanting to have City Hall in the park. So thanks for your concerns, thanks for the great work, and thanks for listening to the citizens and being a good neighbor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Deborah Allen, and I also live in Corona Del Mar. You, you all know that I spent eight years on the PVNR Commission, and I spent two years as chair, and so I'm very concerned about parks. I, I'm also a neighbor to this project, and I want to echo what Denise's comments were and Barry's comments. The architects have done a very, very good job of, of dealing with the major concerns of the neighborhood. Protecting the view plane, of course, has been very important, and I think from what I've seen tonight, if it gets built the way they showed it, that will satisfy that concern. Obviously, there's the concern about lighting, and, and I can see that they're really working on that, and we want to encourage that. And then lastly, about the park, having some experience doing park planning, I do think it's very important that we make it people-friendly. We, we put in facilities that people can use, parking lot somewhere, a restroom that's, that's available. I'm not certain that the one that they have planned, it isn't the best solution. It may be. But just put it someplace so that people know it's there and that they can actually use the park. Because if we get people using the park, we have turned a great corner in, in re-establishing public trust that we as a city know how to build a park that people are going to use. It doesn't have to have ball fields, but it can be a beautiful, a beautiful recreational opportunity. And I think this park can be that, and I would hope that you would have the grand opening of the park certainly the same day you have the grand opening of City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Ron Hendrickson, the Port Streets. I think what we're seeing tonight is, is fantastic progress. I think that the combination of the architectural and engineering team along with the Building Committee, I think that, that what we're seeing tonight is, is just fantastic progress. I do think it's certainly not inappropriate for my Ken to bring up cost concerns. I think you all have those concerns, I think we as citizens do. I think that there's so much information here, and I, I know that the Building Committee, a committee of three, makes a lot of decisions, because you've got to keep this thing moving. And I just think it may be an orientation process to bring other council people along, understanding the necessity of these various additional square footages, and if they can be justified, then they ought to be there. If they can't be justified, then they maybe should be cut back some. But basically, I think that you're, you're on the right track. I think historically, the city has been overly conservative in their building projects, and the results have demonstrated that. They haven't been, it's been, this has been a very conservative city. And not to say that we shouldn't continue to be conservative. I think that we all like to say we're a world-class city, and I think we do want a world-class project here, and I think that's where we're heading right now. I do think that the library expansion is extremely important, and certainly, this is the right time to do that, and it certainly is going to enhance the, the whole concept of a, of a civic center here. I just think as, as we move along, that the, the whole team needs to be judicious in, in what's, has been added in, and if it's justified, let's do it now. Let's, let's not say, gee, why didn't we do that when we had the opportunity? And let's not forget the fact that building costs have significantly reduced from what they were. I was talking to a builder in our area the other day, and houses at $300,000 a square foot are now being built for $200,000 a square foot. So we have a real advantage, and it seems to me in the timeframe that we're moving ahead with this project. Anyway, those are my thoughts, and thank everybody for all their efforts.
Thanks, Ron.
Did you mean $300 instead of $300,000?
Well, I wanted to wake you up. In that case, we're getting a relevant bargain.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers. My name is Karen Tringali from Corona Del Mar. What a balancing act, balancing the, the needs and the requirements of a forward-looking project with the fiscal responsibility of the city. It's quite a challenge, I, I think, for our leaders as well as the citizens to understand the scope and magnitude of the project and how we begin to pay for that. But one of the things that we talked about early on in this project is having an open and honest dialogue, and I'd like to stand here tonight and thank you, all of you, and the Building Committee, the Design Committee, everybody, you know, allowing us to, to provide the kind of input and feedback all along this process to get us to where we are today. You know, I mean, I, I agree with Barry, we certainly don't want to phase a project. We lose some synergies and economies of scale by doing that. I also think that it's important, given the magnitude and scope of this project, that we don't box ourselves into designs that are limiting for the future needs and requirements, those that we know and those that we have yet to experience. It, you know, I, it would appear that the design, you know, does represent the best possible work that our city staff and our professionals that we've hired, taking into account the input from the community. It, it would appear that this design does in fact comprehend the natural quality of the site while maintaining public views and certain other important issues. And if that's the cost to do the right thing, then, I mean, I think that we need to really flush that out over the next couple of months in relation to the financial plan. But I think most importantly, setting those expectations up front and continuing to solicit input from, from professionals and community alike has been an important component of this project, and certainly do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't tell me you're going to complain we have too many native plants in this park.
No. I just want, I'm Jan Van Nistelz, Newport Heights. I want to, I want to also express my thanks to you and to the Design Committee and the Building Committee for coming up with a plan that I think will meet and does meet with the community expectations of City Hall and the park. I think the designers have been very responsive to the public input, and I think they have modified things so that, that most people are now on the same, on the same track. I think certain details like restrooms, I think the solution to incorporate the restroom in the community building with the park users, I think that's something that, that could be considered to reduce the cost of having to build separate restrooms. And I think the, to make it more people-friendly is a good idea, to enable people to appreciate the natural ambiance of the park is a good idea. And so I basically think that, that everybody's on the right track. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you, Jan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It was a toss-up whether I went, felt like I needed to speak or stretch, so I decided to come forward. You're being called upon this evening to yea or nay on the approval of the conceptual design passing this project into schematic design. And with that, it is a big responsibility, and Councilman Hen, your questions and points are very critical to the overall success of the project. I think I would answer your question a little bit differently, and that is that this is the conceptual design. Schematic design really starts to fill that out. And while the further you go into the process, the more expensive design change would be, clearly schematic design is not a time unfamiliar to change. And I think that because of the team that you have, not just the architect, but the construction management group as well, that you have an opportunity here to value engineer a project all the way through. And that is in fact what they will be doing, even if you hadn't brought up the topic this evening. And so I think the importance of approving what's before you tonight, to set clearly the largest envelope you will ever allow to exist, to be utilized as the basis for moving forward on the EIR, is a very appropriate thing to do. And recognize that all of these other elements that need to take place, the overall financing plan of capital in the city, the overall evaluation of restrooms and, and these types of things, still have adequate opportunity to be dealt with during the schematic design. If you don't make those decisions during schematic design and start to look at them during design development, then that becomes very difficult, and very cumbersome, and very expensive. But clearly, in the early phases of the schematic design, you have that opportunity. Don't shortside yourself now by trying to make a cut or delay the process, that then snowballs into a much bigger problem. I think you have the momentum, you have the basis of, of a team that has worked well with the community, has worked well with the staff, has worked well with the council. Continue the challenge with them to bring this in, meeting all those needs, and clearly you will soon be adding a very strong element of need of, of maximum finance as well. I certainly would recommend, as a practicing architect, that you continue with the process you have done well, continue to do well, and continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave.
I have finished stretching.
Well, you're certainly tall, so you've succeeded. But, so, how much time do we have before we reach a point where we get into expensive territory to be making refinements to the concepts presented tonight?
That's a question that I think is, is a matrix answer, because it depends upon the various elements that you're talking about. My belief in the process and my knowledge of the team that you have before you is they will continue to value engineer all the way through the project until the time you move in. And project costs come from multitudes of areas, but one could summarize them in defining two areas. One is obviously the program itself, how many square feet you're dealing with and this type of thing. But another one is the detail or the implementation or the method in which it's achieved. And so there are opportunities of bringing this project in tighter, if you will, financially, and not changing a bit of the program. There are opportunities in changing some of the program and bringing the project in tighter. Don't limit your opportunities of those evaluations at this point in time. Did I successfully avoid answering your question?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
That was very artful.
Thank you, thank you. I'm married, I get a good shot at that.
You must be married for a long time.
Yes, yes. Thirty years.
Yes. So I'll find someone else to ask my questions.
All right. May I be seated now?
Hi, my name is Laura Curran in Corona Del Mar. I have two areas of concern. One is in 2005, I talked about the office space that was considered, and I am glad to see that the sizes of the offices, A, the number of sizes has been reduced, and the proposed sizes have been reduced, because that could potentially save space. The prior plan had offices which, you know, in most commercial environments, new offices are 100 to 150 square feet, that's if you're lucky, and now we're more in that target. But I would like us to look at the number of offices, because Dave was providing me some basic numbers. We still have over 50 private offices in this plan, and that's a lot, given that we have 260 somewhat staff, and not knowing how many staff we'll have in the future if we were to streamline. And also, if we consider those numbers, we can also potentially reduce the 3,500 square feet of planned space for future staff. So I think we really need to look at that amount of private office space. I am glad to hear concern, interest in making it flexible and reconfigurable, because that's important. As technologies change and we look, Steelcase comes out with great new ways to build office space and use cubes and things like that all the time. Fixed offices will become less common, and flexible workspace is more common. The second area I'd like you to consider is a dog park. I, I live in Corona Del Mar. In some ways, it's already the world's biggest dog park. It may not be a popular statement, but every parkway in Corona Del Mar is already de facto a dog park. So you might say, "Well, that's great. If we had a dog park, then all the dogs might go up to the park, and they wouldn't be walking through and using our neighborhood as a dog park and other location all the time." But I think we have to look at the footprint of the park and say, "It's limited." And if you start to chunk up, as was indicated, for specialty uses, then you really start to reduce the ability to expand within that natural setting that we're trying to put in place. And also, I have concerns, if you make it a destination for dogs, small and large, what impact do you have on the natural habitat that you're trying to attack, the bird population, the small animal population, that will be part of the user group in the park? So I appreciate your interest and wanted to make those two points. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to council. You know, one, yeah, well, one suggestion that staff just handed to me, I think, would be valuable to do, and that is for the Building Committee to take another run-through on the interior spaces and look at the office, the workstation mix, the office and the workstation sizes, both the horizontal and the vertical circulation, staff sizes and adjacencies in the public counters and the public entries, and just take another run-through on that and see if we could tighten the building up a bit without hurting the, the architectural integrity. We did take one quick look at it, but we could take another run-through and take a look at that, and I don't think that'll hurt the, the process if we go through that exercise one more time.
Please.
So with that, I would entertain a motion on the staff recommendation.
Let me make just one other comment that's really directed in a constructive way. Part of what we've got here is that I've only had a couple of days really to look at the, at the staff memo. I'd be glad to try and make a contribution to that process by sending the Building Committee a memo with some more specific thoughts about concerns that I might have and issues that I think would be good for you to take a look at.
Okay, good. Do it through the city manager.
Yeah, I'll do that, and I'll try to get that done quickly.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move the staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Motion carries.
Yeah, wow, now we're going to go back to seven, 10. It's 10 for 11. Okay, we're going to go back and start on 10, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to go back and start on 10, oh, I'm sorry, 10 to 10. Going to go back to item number 11.
Notice to the public.
Yeah, yeah. Pardon me? Yeah. City, could you, could everyone be quiet as possible on the way out, please? We have more business to conduct. Okay, Madam Clerk, do you want to read the notice to the public?
Certainly. Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. Now is time for the city council announcements of matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay. Councilwoman Daigle.
None.
Councilwoman Gardner.
Yes, last week I went to a meeting of, well, it was not really a meeting, it was more of a social get-together of the Orange County Arts Commission. And as their guest, they had the chairman of the California Arts Committee. Her name is Melissa Schreiber. She does a mean impersonation of her brother-in-law, the Governator. I bring this up because she mentioned something, this was a gathering of heads of art organizations in Orange County. So these people are really into the whole art scene. They're really, really knowledgeable, and most of them had never heard of this. We've all heard of the Whale Tail license plate. Well, there is a license plate designed by the noted artist Wayne Deboe with all of his wonderful colors and everything, and you can get this through the state of California. And what this does is, this is with the Whale Tail funding certain environmental programs, this funds a large part of the committee's budget, which is working to get art back in schools and that sort of thing. So if you are an art lover, I suggest you go, you can just go online and follow up on this.
Okay. Councilwoman Webb.
I'm sure that all of you remember the announcement I made back in January, or was it the first meeting in February perhaps, when I had just returned from the Sundance Film Festival, how I was doing research for our Newport Film Festival. Well, I'd like to mention to you that our film festival is coming up. It's going to be on the 22nd of April and go through the 30th. And you can go onto the website and buy your tickets.
Actually, Don, it's the 23rd of April.
Excuse me, 23rd. I'm sorry. Just wanted to get you down here a day early to where you could have time to recreate in one of our hotel spaces.
Happy, are we?
Good comeback.
At any rate, I am particularly interested and very proud to announce that the closing event will feature the same movie that was the opening event at the Sundance Film Festival. And that's the film called 500 Days of Summer. The reason why I'm so proud is that my nephew, Mark Webb, was the director, and he has received at Sundance Film Festival, Variety listed him as one of the top 10 young directors to watch in the upcoming years. And so I've already gotten my six tickets to go to that movie, and I would hope that we can show him a good turnout from Newport Beach and, and everybody that is in earshot until the theater fills up, fills up. It's going to be over here at Toledo Theater on Thursday night at 8:00 on April 30th. My announcement.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Hen.
Two things. First, very quickly, I'd like to congratulate our police department for having finished first, once again, for the fifth time in a row, in the Las Vegas to Bakersfield run, which is a 120-mile run that was completed on March 14th and 15th. Fabulous performance. Homer, I think if we're looking for places to save money in our budget, we could probably cut out a few police cars, because we can catch the criminals on foot. There's no doubt about that. Secondly, I am holding in my hands here a little brochure that was put together by cancer survivors. This is a brochure in support of the American Cancer Society Relay for Life event, which is going to take place on May 16th and 17th at the Newport Harbor High School. It's a, it's the primary fundraising event for the American Cancer Society, and the city of Newport Beach has been a great supporter. Last year, the event raised over $200,000 to help fight cancer, which is something that affects virtually all of us, one way or another, in our lives. And I'm proud, I'm proud also to say that your city council, amongst others, there are other city teams, has formed a team to participate in the event. The team is called Council Critters, and if my council members can put their hats on, these hats are actually from the 200, the 2008. Councilwoman Gardner looks especially good. Oh, I see. Councilmember Webb.
This is a critter.
Yeah. He's bringing his own hats, yeah. Well, he's got a hat for every occasion.
Is that one of your trips from Wisconsin?
I always said, Don, it's crabby.
So the, the Council Critters have formed a team. We're going to raise some money by committing to run a half marathon at the event at Newport Harbor High School. And that's 52 laps of the quarter-mile track, and we're going to encourage everyone we know to donate as much per lap as they are able in support of the American Cancer Society and your Council Critters team. So you'll be hearing some more from us about this soon. In any event, I certainly hope everyone supports this event to the greatest possible extent. Thank you.
Can we take our hats off now?
Yes.
Councilman Rosansky.
Yes, I'll just mention one event that's coming up this weekend. This Saturday is going to be a beach cleanup day, and I believe we're meeting down at the McFadden Pier at 11:00 PM. There'll be a couple of short, very short speeches, and they'll be doing beach cleanup. There'll be some booths there as well, talking about different ways to be environmentally friendly. So we're all invited down, 11:00 on Saturday.
I'm sorry, you said there would be booths down there?
I, I think there's a few booths, yes.
Booths? Ah. I thought she said booze.
Boos? Hey, booths. Whatever you can do to get people down to clean the beach.
There are several bars in the neighborhood, though, that I'm sure you can.
Yeah. One way or another, we'll get some booze.
Mayor pro Tim Curry.
Well, as most of you know, 2009 marks the 25th anniversary of our relationship with our sister city in Japan, Okazaki. And I was privileged, along with Homer, to be one of 10 Newporters who were there over the last two weeks to celebrate that event with our Okazaki counterparts. And let me tell you that the hospitality was truly tremendous. Honoring the anniversary of the founding of the, of the relationship, which, which really was the result of the work of the two Rotary Clubs, Newport Balboa and Okazaki South, we had an opportunity to talk and reminisce with some of the founding fathers like Hal Gray, Dr. Tineso Okada, and Massey Okada, who really helped nurture this relationship and keep it going over the years. I had the opportunity to ride in the annual cherry blossom parade. I spoke to about 750 very impressive junior high students who filed in in procession in uniforms and sat silently through a, a speech from their principal and from yours truly, which was, which was remarkably impressive. It happened to make the front page of the Okazaki newspaper, so I'm, I'm sure it says some goofy guy from California. We had a tour of the new Okazaki library. They've just opened up a $100 million library. I had an opportunity to talk with Mayor Shibata about its very extensive solar energy program, and they also have one of the most impressive collections of American jazz albums in a listing room where you can go in, hit a button, and listen to some very impressive Blue Note albums. I, I took in a little John Coltrane while I was there. While we were there, we also toured an elementary school, and it was interesting to see a class of fourth graders raise a finger in the air and say, yes, we can, which shows you the popularity of President Obama throughout, throughout the world. Over the years, hundreds of exchange students have come back and forth between our two cities, and dozens of residents have gone back and forth, really in a way that, when you see a close, builds great understanding and trust between our two countries and our two cities. So it was a thoroughly delightful trip, and I encourage anyone who has an interest in this to, to contact the Sister City Association, who sponsors these trips and who organizes them. We also have Sister Cities in Insonata and Antiphrance, and, and get involved, because I think you'll find it very, very rewarding.
Just, just to clarify, was that $100 million dollars or yen?
It was, it was $100 million. It was a something in billions of yen. I did a little calculation over there.
Okay, I have no announcements this evening. Madam Clerk?
Consent calendar, all matters listed under consent calendar. Items 1 through 19 and supplemental item S24 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss the consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay. Councilman Hen.
I have none.
Councilman Rosansky.
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor pro Tim Curry.
No items, other than to note that we are completing Phase 1 of our traffic signal modernization program and commencing Phases 2 and 3 on items 5 and 6 on tonight's agenda, moving forward to improve the traffic flow and congestion throughout the city.
I would ditto that, and also making progress on an important council priority, so we're looking to improve traffic flow. So those are very important items.
Okay.
None.
Okay. Councilman Webb?
None.
And I have none. Staff, any items to pull?
Don't have one, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to point out item number 19, a public meeting on proposed tourism business improvement district. If anyone cares to comment on that, we will take it off the consent.
Okay. Anyone from the public want to pull anything from the consent calendar?
No.
No, you have to pull.
Yeah, you can come up, man. If you want to pull one of the items, you can comment on it, and we'll talk about it separately.
I just, actually, my name's Kathy Lewis. I'm a resident and a member of the Newport Beach Housing Coalition. I just have a quick question on item 18, and that's, I'd like to know when the revised draft housing element will be available for public review.
I don't know. We still have quite a bit of work to do to respond to the comments from Department of Housing and Community Development.
Mayor Selich, I'd like to pull item 12.
Okay. Any other items? Okay, I'll bring it back to council for motion.
I've moved the approval of the consent calendar, items 1 through 19, with the exception of item 12.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item number 12 is the Coronel Del Mar concession amendment to the concession and lease agreement for Fuji Grill. Should've just stayed there.
My name is Laura Curran. Now, normally the consent calendar's a good bet. You'll be out of here by 8:00, but tonight, the tables were turned, so. Members of council, first of all, I want to speak about Fuji Grill. I live in Coronel Del Mar, and so we're really happy to have a great restaurant. They serve good food. The owner is really friendly, really pleasant, and he doesn't even say anything if you sit there with other food that you brought from home sometimes. And the patio's really great, too. So, so why did I pull this item? Well, I had two questions. I did read the staff report, and I had a question about the closed session. Why was there a closed session to negotiate this agreement? And our attorney responded and said, you know, it's a closed session with potential for litigation. But when I think of a commercial lease, I think of terms, opening hours, staff, labor rates, and I'm not sure what there would be that could expose us to litigation. And if it's a non-standard item, which might merit confidentiality, the only things that come to mind are public safety and unsafe working conditions. And so I guess I'm thinking about a bigger issue in that we seem to have a lot of items in our city these days and, which show a trend of holding closed sessions when there's a whiff of potential litigation, but there's no real explanation about what the potential risk for litigation is, and it doesn't look immediate apparent on an item such as this. So it's just a question. And then, secondly, and I've talked about this before, you know, we're talking in the staff report about the negotiation of terms of a lease, and I'd really like to have more financial disclosure, because what this report does is propose, and there was a lot of work put in by many people, and I appreciate that, that we adjust the lease. And that would mean that rather than the proposed revenue in lease revenue of $400,000 over five years with some adjustments for the CPI, so let's say over five years, $80,000 a year, we'd have $400,000, we change it such that the city would realize $290,000 in lease revenue, and there would be a $60,000 discount in the first year. So we'd get $35,000 versus $80,000. And this is being proposed to help the operator, because his revenue's down because of the economic conditions. And, you know, he didn't really necessarily have good opportunity for revenue projections in the beginning as well. So first, we're going to have a $110,000 reduction in revenue, and then the second way we're paid is we get 15% of his revenue. With the decline in his revenue and being, and his revenue being lower than estimated estimate, expected estimates, our receipts have gone down as well. So my question is, first of all, I don't know what his revenue was, so what our 15% was based on the staff report. So the question, what's the overall financial implication of this change? Let's look at it like a P and L. What would our revenues be with the initial lease and the new lease? What would our expenses be? And what's the net gain or loss to the city? And also, if the revenues recover for the operator in years three, four, and five, which would be wonderful, does the rent to the city return to prior levels? Do we get to come whole on this lease? So again, let's be clear, economic conditions impact businesses such as Fuji Grill, and good business operators and landlords adapt to those tenants. My family operated small strip malls for years, and we worked with our tenants when they had issues. And I want this operator to succeed. At the same time, we're talking about real money, and it's your money and my money. And as I've said on prior projects, all I'm asking for is that we have a full picture of the projects with the financial and operational implications of changes that are being made. The staff reports, staff puts a lot of time and has a lot of information, but it's not always visible to the public. I'd like to see those reports be more complete, provide a full picture of revenues, risks, and benefits, and I thank you to city council for your attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I, just a question.
State your name, please.
My name is Steve Ray. This actually doesn't apply to item 12. I was just wondering, in the motion for the consent calendar, I thought I heard the motion being consent calendar items 1 through 19, with the exception of 12, there is another consent calendar item, item S24, and I was wondering if the council intended to, or accidentally let that one out.
No, S24 was consent. I thought that was in the motion.
No. It was.
Okay. Thanks for pointing that out.
Supplemental agenda. It doesn't list it as a consent.
It says 12.
12 consent calendar, S24, at the top.
Okay. I'm going off of this one.
All right. Any other comments on item number 12? Okay, we'll close that, bring it back to council.
The approval?
You know, I'll just quickly comment a couple of things that Laura just said about the, the rent. We did reduce the, the base rent, Laura, but he does have, pay percentage rent, and the bases, the percentage is against the base. So, for instance, if the first year's $36,000, if he hits 200, more than $240,000 in rent, then he's going to pay more than $36,000, I believe, and I don't know what the figures are, but he's, he's probably on track this year alone, considering the bad conditions and the fact, you know, that he got a late start last year to exceed that. So I don't think that the, the spread is, is big as you think it is, or, you know, and, and maybe we could've done a better job in the staff report of explaining all that. But he is a good operator. I think he's done a great job down there with what he's had. He's invested way more money in, in the property than I ever would've thought any operator would have, and, and I think the goal is for the city to help him succeed there, because I think it's in all our best interest to have a, a quality operator in a high-profile location like the Coronel Del Mar Beach. So I support the motion, and, go ahead, Dan. Do your thing.
Motion carries.
We still have to deal with S24. Did you want to comment on S24?
I'll move approval of S24.
Second.
Okay. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, we've already done, okay, we go to oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilwoman Daigle.
Yes, I attended the meeting of the San Tation District where Newport Beach holds a seat, and I'm sure for most folks, as long as things kind of move, when you push the handle, you're probably not very interested in the details and appreciative of representative democracy. However, there is one item that I think that folks However, there is one item that I think that folks will be of interest, and that is the, the district is going to be amending its regional permit for the outfall, and that's, when it first came in, it was very controversial, and what they want to do now is to amend the monitoring plan. So I asked them what the scope of that would be, and their initial response was, you know, not much, pretty minor, so I have asked and received a strikeout and underlying version of that, and I'm going to pass it on to the council members, and there will be some workshops in June, so I think we can be the judge in terms of determining whether or not they're, those changes are minor, so thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, at the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee, we asked to move something to the council, which is a proposal by MyOcean to fund a screen that would be at beaches such as Big Corona or Newport Pier, not talking screens, just picture screens. We talk about what the surf conditions are, but also give us a way of having messages about runoff and that sort of thing. One of the things we've wrestled with over the years is, we've really done a great job of educating ourselves about runoff, because the bay and the ocean are so important to us. The challenge has been to educate those people who visit our beaches and don't realize that what they're doing in Corona or Tustin can impact the beaches as well, and this will give us a pilot program for a year to see if it makes an impact and how people react to it, and at no cost to the city, so that will be coming to the council shortly.
Councilwoman Webb?
None.
Councilman Hen?
Just a quick report on the group homes issue in addition to the agenda item tonight that we considered. Since the last council meeting, there was a meeting on March 25th at which the reasonable accommodation application for Pacific shores for three sites totaling about 50 beds was denied by the hearing officer, and, but also at that meeting, the hearing officer approved a reasonable, approved a reasonable accommodation application for a location at 900 West Balboa. And then we are making progress moving through the agenda of approval hearings here. We have a use permit hearing for 1115 West Balboa that is currently scheduled for May 7th at 4:00 PM. That was the item that was remanded back by council for a decision to be made. And then there's a reasonable accommodation hearing for Balboa Recovery at 4:00 PM on April the 30th, that's a total of three facilities with 30 beds. And it appears, this is tentative, but it looks like the Kramer Center application for reasonable accommodation will be scheduled for April 29th. That's a single location for 12 beds. And just by way of update, so far it appears that all but one location on our abatement list appear to have abated, and that one location is apparently considering a reasonable accommodation application. So we seem to be making steady progress in addressing this issue, and one of these days we'll be through with all these hearings and appeals. Thanks.
Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Procham Curry?
I represent the city on the Orange County Division of the League of Cities, the City Selection Committee, which makes appointments to various boards and commissions, and for better or worse, I was appointed to the Orange County Parks Commission representing our coastal cities, and so I look forward to assuming those responsibilities beginning next month.
Very good. Okay, I have no reports this evening. We'll move on then to our second scheduled public hearing, Item Number Twenty-One on the agenda, it's the review of the Community Development Block Grant Program fiscal year 2009, 2010. Does anyone in the council feel compelled to have a staff report on this? No.
Mr. Mayor, I think that it would just be helpful if we could let Katie raise the question that we asked in the staff report about the Seaview Lutheran Senior Housing.
Okay.
Yes, in addition to the applications that we received for public service provider funding and our standard capital improvement projects for sidewalks, curb and gutter, we did receive a capital improvement application from Seaview Lutheran Plaza. They're an affordable housing development here within the community, and they're requesting a total of $175,000 to replace a deteriorated plumbing system. It was staff's recommendation that due to the large amount of funding that they were requesting compared to the minimal amount of funds that the city receives in community development block grants, staff felt that a more appropriate funding mechanism would be through the city's Affordable In-Lu Housing Fund, which does have sufficient funds available there, so staff is really just seeking direction from council on whether or not we may enter into discussions with Seaview Lutheran regarding an agreement for $175,000 in Affordable In-Lu Housing Funds.
I did have a question about that, because the, you know, we certainly want to be supportive of Seaview Lutheran. When you look at the In-Lu sort of definitions, it's about producing new housing, and we're really not going to produce new housing, so is there another way to look at that?
Yeah, I think so. Among the things that we need to do as part of our housing element updates every five to seven years is look at affordable units that may be lost because contracts with the funding agency or covenants that the city has put on are expiring. And a couple of years ago, Seaview Lutheran was a HUD-funded project at its construction, and the loan term had expired, and we were fearful that we might lose those as affordable units, but the Lutheran Church was interested in keeping that, them affordable over the longer term. So I think that if we were to use the In-Lu funds to preserve this affordable housing, it would be an appropriate use of those funds and would help us in meeting our housing element requirements.
Okay, so not just preserving a structure per se, but preserving the unit, the affordable unit, okay? And then also I learned that the city can get a supplement to its allocation through the stimulus package of $93,000, and I used to work in city planning, and our TDVG coordinator at the time, we still remain in contact, and she was the one that cheered that with me, so I'd be glad to send you the link, but we could potentially get a $93,000 boost?
We're aware of that and working on it.
Oh, great, and.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, and then also, the, apparently the comment period would be shortened from 30 days to 15 days, so they want to make it as easy as possible for you to get the money. So that would come back to council then?
Yes, we would have to amend our, the action plan, if you approve this action plan tonight, we would have to come back with an amendment for the use of those funds.
Okay, so for an extra $93,000, we can probably amend it then? That wouldn't be too tough? Okay, thank you.
Sharon, for the affordable housing, then, would that result in a covenant that they would somehow?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, that, that $93,000, that's the big, because I heard that we were going to get this big amount of money on increased allocation to CBDG, that's it, $93,000?
That's it for us.
I would certainly support this addition. I think it's well worth it, we don't want to lose those units.
I would echo that, I would also support the allocation for Seaview and whatever we can do incrementally from additional stimulus funds.
As would I, and I'm glad to, for staff to just exercise its discretion about the amount and the appropriate source, so.
I'd still like to see it come back, because, you know, there, we are setting a precedent here as far as subsidizing repairs and things, and I'd like a little bit more information about why they don't have enough money in their reserves and things like that, so I'm supportive of helping them and extending the covenant, certainly would be a valuable thing for the city, but I guess I'm a little bit more circumspect, this is a slippery slope, and we have plenty of people in town that have needs that we need to be careful that not setting a precedent for that.
Okay. Thank you, Katie.
I just think that for those of you who didn't see the No Talent Show, that our presenter tonight could be on America's Best Dance Crew.
Anyone from the public want to address us on this issue? Step forward, please.
Hi, I'm Beverly Schubert, I'm a resident in Harborview Hills, and I'm here tonight as staff from the Kennedy Commission, and I would like to comment on this staff's alternative solution for the Seaview Lutheran Plaza in, using affordable housing In-Lu funds to make plumbing repairs. It's a small amount of money that we have anyway, about a million two, and in the current, we know for the current planning period, we need to assist developers that may come forward to develop approximately seven or eight hundred newly constructed affordable homes for very low and low income, and I think that a million two doesn't go very far with that task anyway, and I'd just really like to see funds obtained from a different source. I don't have a problem with helping Seaview Plaza, I've read every single word in the housing element, and I didn't see anything about preservation, about a need for preservation funds to maintain those homes as affordable, so that's all.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Arkroves. I am currently the president of the Board of Directors of Seaview Lutheran Plaza, located at 2800 Pacific View Drive in Corona Del Mar. I'd like to introduce other board members present this evening, Lloyd Krausey, our vice president, Elsie Ellis, a secretary, and Evelyn Hart, one of the community members of the board. Seaview Lutheran Plaza is a result of congregational members' perception of a need for affordable housing for seniors in this area in the 1970s. They formed an independent California corporation, sought HUD financial assistance, and purchased its current site from the Lutheran Church of the Master. Construction of its 101 apartments was completed in 1982, and it became the city's first affordable housing element. It has been providing safe, attractive living conditions to its residents since that day, without seeking or receiving any financial assistance from the city of Newport Beach. It is non-sectarian in its operation and its selection of residents. It serves low and very low-income families and has no at-market units. Once a family financially qualifies for residence, their rent can never be increased beyond a third of their income. While HUD-approved unit rents may increase, the resident's rent does not change unless their income changes. I believe this is unique to Seaview and avoids the eviction situation recently reported in the daily pilot. Seaview is a residential complex, not an assisted-living facility, however, it does provide a resident counselor who assists residents in obtaining necessary. The Board of Directors is composed of nine members with a minimum of five corporate members. There currently are six corporate and three community members, none of whom can be residents of Seaview. It is their responsibility to select and oversee the management team, control fiscal matters, and to develop policy for the operation of resident programs. Our request to the city for assistance is based on the resident's safety nature of the condition of the water lines serving the residents' apartments, the cost of remedial measures, and the limitation of HUD-imposed restrictions on the use of Seaview's reserve funds. In closing, the board would like to recognize and thank Kathleen Bell Boden for her assistance and the council for its consideration of this matter. We'll be happy to respond to any questions you may have. That was my prepared presentation. I would like to comment on one thing, I have also read the material in terms of the city's position, and if you read it, what you find is, originally it included repair as well as new facilities, but it's easy to see when you read back five pages or approximately five sections, that somebody has changed that and has put in for new construction. So the original concept would appear to me to have been to build and maintain affordable housing in the city of Newport Beach. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the council on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close it, bring it back to council.
Make the motion to adopt as recommended by staff.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries.
And so we're clear, that includes coming back on the Seaview issue, or what are we doing with Seaview?
I had always intended the agreement would come back to council.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, public comments, anyone want to address the council? Step forward, please. Lloyd, you've been sitting there all evening.
Well, he's coming forward, Mr. Mayor, if I may, forgive me, but I overlooked reporting out from closed session to open session regarding the IBC issue. Council authorized the, outside counsel to file suit against the city of Irvine regarding the accessory business use, and I should have reported that, so my apologies on a seven oh vote.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Lloyd Eichert, I'm kind of disappointed to hear what Councilman Hen said, because I'm pushing a police car, and he says we ought to have them all walking, so I hope maybe it doesn't concern us. As most of you know, I've been involved in projects here in the community. One of the first major projects I did was the Fireman's Grill after 9/11, and with the Commodores, which I'm a Commodore, I designed and had that built, and we've, that thing gets used in the community every weekend, and I know you've all had an opportunity to see that. I also helped with the fire truck, it's the restoration of the fire truck down on Balboa Island, and that's been getting a lot of community response. My project that I'm working on now, and I know most of you are familiar with, is this police car. In 1951, the Newport Beach Police had 1951 Fords. I was able to get a picture of an original car, and we're replicating that car. It's 90% complete now, and the only thing I have to do is the siren is being restored, I just restored the light, so I have an original light, red light for it, and there's a couple other little things, but this is a real project. What we're trying to attempt to do here is to raise funds, and I realize the economy has been less than stellar, and frankly, the fundraising has been less than stellar also. As of a couple of weeks ago, I was able to raise less than $2,000. The budget for it is $12,500. I have not drawn against any of the money that has been donated, which is tax deductible, the checks are made out to the city of Newport Beach. I haven't drawn against it because I frankly didn't know whether the project was going to go forward or not. I put $11,000 into it of my own personal funds, and since about a week or so ago, Councilman Rosansky has put in 500, which I appreciate. Some of the Commodores have stepped up, and I've, Theodore Robbins Ford has put in 500. Lula Halfaker called me with traditional jewelry, she's putting in a thousand, so hopefully the money will come forward. As I say, it's a situation that I'm kind of waiting to see if Newport Beach, which is, even though the economy suffered, everybody suffers, if Newport Beach will step up and give this gift to our police department. It was used this last Saturday at the VFW for a program they had there for the police department. The chief has said that it's going to be used in recruiting, it'll be used in parades, different programs within the community. This is going to be something that's going to be here for generations to come, this car will be around for a long, long time. So I'd like to get support of the council, and I'd like to get support of the community to go ahead and get this thing funded. After talking about the city hall, which is 100 million, I'm only asking for $12,500, so it's not much, but. So it's not much, but I think it'll be something that the community will appreciate. Anybody has any questions? I'd be happy to answer any questions on it.
Do you want to give an address or information if people want to make a donation?
People want to make a donation, they can send, they can make their checks out to the city of Newport Beach Police Car Project, and they can send them to Newport Beach, or they can send them to the police department. But make it out to the city of Newport Beach, and we appreciate any donations, so.
You should offer up a free ride in the car with every donation.
And you get a ride in the front.
There you go.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate all your support.
And a donut, yeah, you got to get a donut.
Yeah.
Get a free ride to the donut shop, how about that?
You get free donuts, too.
Free donuts, too.
So Councilman Hens said, ask, and I'm asking. So we need funding. But this is real. This isn't a pie in the sky. This car, you've seen it driving around town, we've seen it at the police appreciation breakfast, and it's, like I say, it's 90% done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lloyd. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the agenda. Next item is, we're just skipping all over the place here. Next item is item number 23, implementation of the CalPERS retirement formula for the lifeguard safety employees.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and City Manager, Bill O. The item before you this evening is on the agenda for city council approval.
Just state your name just so you get a...
I'm sorry, Terry Cassidy, Human Resources Director. The item is on the agenda for your approval this evening because it is a contractual obligation that was reached as a result of meet and confer between the city's authorized representatives and the representatives of the Newport Beach Lifeguard Management Association. This MOU term was from July 1, 2006 until December 31, 2008. However, council previously authorized this amendment to our PERS contract to offer to the LMA the 3% at 50 retirement benefit. It previously was to be implemented at the end of the contract term, December 31, 2008. Actuarial valuations were done previously, however, actuariales have a short lifespan, and the assumptions that were, the basis for that actuarial previously were estimated and shared with you in a prior council meeting. And so this evening, we are before you because of a change in staff in HR. I was not here for the negotiations on this term for the contract, but the agreement does require council action in order to amend the CalPERS contract, and there are specific terms required. As of January 1, 2009, it's also required under state law that an actuary be present to discuss, so if you have any questions about the basis for the cost impact, the actuary can answer those for you. Richard Santos, the senior actuary from CalPERS, who is the person most knowledgeable about actuariales and also the author of our actuarial on this amendment, is here to answer your questions. But it was pointed out earlier that in the negotiation process, the city's negotiator, Bill Avery, had costed out this benefit impact as approximately $43,000 to $48,000. At that time, that was for a six-month term. After looking at the numbers with Mr. Santos this evening, and this benefit will impact 17 members of the LMA, we found out that the contract for 3% at 50 for the fire association had not been implemented at that time. So the cost estimate of $48,000 for a six-month implementation period was really very low. And once the contract amendment was implemented for fire safety, we had to recost it out because this benefit affects all of the safety unit, which is police, fire, and LMA. And for your information, the police is 148 members, fire is 135, LMA is 17. So the total cost for this benefit implemented, if it were implemented 60 days from today's date approximately, in accordance with the CalPERS requirements, would be about $135,000. And the recalculation of the number, the $180,000 that is in the staff report, it's lower because the fully burdened cost was figured, and it should have been costed out on base pay. So it's $130,000 implementation cost to the city to offer this benefit that was previously approved. And I realize out of concern for putting this item on the agenda and noted in the staff report that the climate has changed considerably, but keeping in mind that this was agreed as part of our negotiating process two years ago, and it is required to be implemented, we are here asking your approval and asking the city clerk to process the appropriate CalPERS documents. Mr. Santos will be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the president of the LMA, Brent Jacobson, is also here this evening, if you have any questions, as he sat at the table and I was employed by the city at the time. So the other information is attached to your staff report. If you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you.
Okay, Councilman Gardner?
It's just, it's my understanding that we really don't have a lot of flexibility in this.
Technically, that's correct. This was a contractual obligation incurred two years ago, and unfortunately, it was not done prior to the expiration of the contract. But it is part of the negotiating process that the terms be implemented, yes.
If I might as well. It remains true even though that the MOU itself has reached the end of its terms. So we have to implement or be in breach of our contract.
Just one more thing. This second reading would be May 12th, so there would be a 30-day differential between this reading and the next one, so it would be back on a future agenda.
Well, I didn't support the enhancement of the benefit at initial time, and I think today that, you know, the benefit's grown so rich that maybe, you know, if we weren't in a contractual obligation, it would be reconsidered. However, I am obligated to honor contracts, although I didn't agree with it initially. In effect, I will honor the contract.
Okay, any other comments, questions, staff?
The actuarial amount won't change again on May 12th, will it?
No, it won't. Mr. Santos, would you like to comment about actuarial very briefly?
Thanks for having me here tonight. No, the answer to that question is no, the amount won't change. If you were to delay this beyond August of this year, then we would have new data in-house, and we would have to process the evaluation over again. So that answer's no.
Yeah, second.
Okay, anybody from the public want to comment? Seeing none, please vote.
With Councilmember Rosansky voting no, the motion carries.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, we're going to adjourn them tonight in memory of two people. First, Councilman Gardner.
It's such a coincidence, a couple that have been divorced for many years. You would think that you would be speaking of them individually at different times. But John and Audrey McIntosh died within a week of each other, and they, together, what they created made such a difference in our city, and so I feel like I, hopefully, I can be sensitive to both their families, but feel, we have to talk about them together because John and Audrey started with the ten-stool snack shop where Ruby's in Corona del Mar is. And from that, they built the Far West empire, which they went on, Rubens, the Ruben Lee Moonraker. And at a certain point, Far West was where you came, if you wanted to get in the restaurant business. That was the great training, and then they had created that together. After they divorced, Audrey went on and did a lot of things in real estate and was very active with her church. And what they never tell you in obituaries is just her wicked sense of humor. She had, she was great with one-liners. And John continued with Far West for quite a while. He remarried, it was wife Kathy, and spent his later years really as an outdoorsman, loved his fishing up in Alaska and then down at the Cape. They have had three sons, Scott, Pat, and John, who survived them as well as grandchildren. So they made a big difference, certainly in the restaurant business in our city and elsewhere.
Okay, and Councilman Webb?
Tonight, I'd like to close in the memory of John Allen Standich. He's a gentleman that was born in 1927, moved to Newport, well, moved to California and Newport Beach in 1942, graduated from Newport Harbor High School. Started to work after a tour in the Navy with the city utilities department, actually it was the public works department back then. And he and his brother were our city electricians for over 40 years. They literally taped together a rather archaic system, particularly those areas along the peninsula, but they were the go-to people in that if you had any streetlight problems in the city, they could tell you what was wrong, and they could go out and fix it. We really relied very heavily on the Standich brothers, and John was the younger of the two. But both of them were very dedicated city employees. After his retirement, he ended up spending some time in Prescott, Arizona, and then moved to Annapolis, Maryland, where he passed away on March 16, 2009. I knew both of them fairly well through the years that I was here, and they were very dedicated employees. I think that his brother Glenn Standich was the only one that I know of that has approached Dorothy Palin as far as approaching the 47 years of service, because I think John's brother was maybe 45, 46 years. So at any rate, I'd like to close in the memory of John Allen Standich.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to adjourn tonight's meeting to Tuesday, April 28, at 2:00 PM, in order to conduct the AB 1234 Ethics Training. Are you going to do that like the comedy, you know, thing when you get a ticket? Something like that? Or can we do it over the Internet? No?
It'll be, yeah.
Anyway, the meeting...
Correspondence course.
Yeah, correspondence. The meeting will be held here in the council chambers. We're adjourned.